All right, I'll go ahead and call the Nottingham Planning Board meeting for Wednesday, August 28th, 2024 to order. Before we begin, I'll start at this table up here and just have everybody introduce themselves, please.
Skip server.
And, well, sorry, introduce yourself and I think everybody up here is Planning Board anyway, so never mind. Let's just specify which board you're with, but yeah.
John Morton, Suckins Rep, Planning Board.
Jerry Sebastian, Planning Board and Zoning Board.
Edward Veal, Planning Board.
Drew Stevens, Planning Board.
Doug Cummings, Planning Board.
Blair Haiti, SRPC.
And we have a packed room tonight, or pretty close to packed for us, a lot of department heads in the room that I recognize, so I appreciate everybody being here. This is a non-business meeting, meaning we're not holding public hearings. This specifically is a meeting we hold every year. It's a joint meeting with the zoning board where we invite the zoning board and then any other town, department, and committee to attend, just to, so we can get input and feedback, work collaboratively as the planning board looks to have our action items and agenda items for the remainder of this year, and then long-term items for the following year or years. So again, we don't work in a vacuum, so it's good. What we do tends to impact others, and so whatever we can do to kind of streamline things and work cohesively is our goal. We have a kind of tentative agenda on list tonight, but what I'd like to do is honor the department heads first and the department individuals that are here. The fire chief, police chief, because obviously you may get pulled out, so I'd like to hear from you first if there's anything you'd like to talk to us about, or if there's anything that we have in there, either our regulations that creates extra work for you, creates confusion, that lands on your plate. And when we accept subdivisions and site plans, we always send those out to the department heads as well, just for input, so that it's a, our goal there is to hopefully not have anybody get blindsided with a development or a commercial development that's, you know, may have an impact to you and your teams. So I don't know if either of you would like to come up, fire chief, police chief, either?
Do you want, do you want, sorry.
Yeah.
Do you want to just ask, like, in case they don't want to stay for the whole evening?
Yeah.
Just ask them, do they see things that are wrong that need to be fixed or are, do they just want to speak up to that way that we could?
Yeah, sorry, that's the goal. So Mr. Morton's point was, if there's anything specifically, any of you here, and again, we'll start with police and fire, the emergency responders, if there's anything you see wrong or that you would like us to address, you know, please let us know. Again, we just extend the invite to all of you to make sure that, if you'd like, yeah, just because it's hard to hear in here.
Do you think the new governor, the driveway is not, or do you find issues with this? Do you find issues with hydrants where they're placed? I mean, do you find, should we specify different things for this? Whatever.
My biggest, well, it comes to me the most is cisterns. Now, everybody's going concrete, it seems like, locally, we're still, it's in our subdivision requirements, I guess, that says it needs to be fiberglass and these certain specifications. Is that something we're going to change? Is it something we can change?
We definitely can change it. I thought, my understanding of the prior feedback was that we, the town was still preferring the concrete, actually, no, the fiberglass version, I'm sorry, for a number of reasons associated with that. So, so we haven't changed the, and I don't think there was a plan on us changing it unless, you know, unless, if you're here to tell us, or in your experience, if concrete is now equal.
So we don't have, we have two concrete ones in town. We had problems with one, the other one we haven't had problems with, we've never had problems since. But now it's more common, you know, there's a lot more of them going in that are concrete. They're putting in several sections. It's like four or five tanks put together instead of one big tank. I believe they're warranting them. I haven't done the research to see, you know, what the, how long, you know, I don't know. I mean, the fiberglass ones are rated for 30 years. What happens after that? We own them, right?
We own them. We generally own them, but yeah, it's a good point. And when I, when this had come up previously, I had done some research, but it seemed like, depending on what state you went on, you know, one was a concrete manufacturer, they said there was a better, another was a poly manufacturer, they said there's a better, and some were, sold both and just extolled the virtues of both and how each can have their own benefits is so, to when you would use each. So I didn't believe there was any change, any intention this year to change that. But this is kind of where it gets over, over our expertise, and we normally would go to yourself and then maybe our engineering firm, and ask, you know, is it time to start along concrete? You know, it have to be either or. And what do we put in for requirements for, for like warranties on them?
Right.
Or do we still stand true with the poly?
The problem was there? Uh, the water wasn't staying at the particular level, I guess, so they drained it and resealed them and.
So your preference would be fiberglass?
I don't have a preference, to be honest with you, as long as it holds water. I don't really care what it's made out of, honestly.
Okay, well, that's kind of unclear.
Does the state allow concrete?
Yes. So is concrete going everywhere around this area?
Industry standard now is concrete is perfectly acceptable.
Yeah.
What are the issues with concrete over fiberglass? I'm not very.
Concrete's porous, I guess. I mean, they're coating them in something to keep them from leaking, you know?
Okay. And I guess that's the, that's the proside of concrete is, if you ever do have a leak or something like that, it's easier to work on than potentially like fiberglass, where if that starts to fail, getting someone to patch the fiberglass, I think is a little more technical than concrete, where you're right, it's just generally some kind of applying a new sealant in it.
Is there a huge cost difference?
Yeah, double.
That's the, it's double?
For fiberglass?
Mm-hmm.
How many, these days, are we talking to that are going to be sprinklers?
So they have an option, right, to either sprinkle or put in a cistern in development, and then have to supply fire protection, that's all we require. So it's kind of up to them, if they want to spend the money and try to pass it on to the consumer of the house, you know, and they can build it in, or if they sacrifice land and put in a cistern.
Yeah, historically, historically, applicants have kind of taken it as an option, so the input we'd normally get from the fire department would be requesting ideally a cistern upon, say, a major subdivision, obviously not one or two houses, but a major subdivision that usually be want, unless there was already a cistern present. Within a certain radius it'd be a cistern and sprinklers. Oftentimes, the applicant would opt for one or the other. And now we're seeing oftentimes sprinklers, because they're much cheaper than the cisterns. They have more direct benefit to the individual houses, but they're not necessarily helping with the community side of it.
Is it, see if I recall correctly, but a Maple Ridge applicant has said, oh, sprinklers. He's putting in all sprinklers up there.
Oh, Potawatka Ridge, yep.
Yeah.
Not Maple, Potawatka.
I'm sorry, what is it?
Potawatka Ridge.
Potawatka Ridge, sorry.
Different one, yeah.
Yeah. And he's doing all sprinklers. That's unusual?
No, I think we've seen that in the last couple, the last three I could think of, major subdivisions, from seven to whatever it was, 20 lots, have been sprinklers in lieu of a cistern.
And that would be preferred, right, sprinklers? You don't care, as long as there's suppression there?
We can't require sprinklers, right. That's illegal. We can't require sprinklers. We can only require a cistern, and if the applicant wants to come to you, the planning board, and make a deal with you that they will sprinkler, then you can accept that, but we cannot tell the applicant that they have to sprinkle their house.
Yeah, I think we usually waive it. They apply a waiver for the cistern in lieu of sprinklers, so that, I think, I think that's RSA or about the sprinklers not being able to be required, except for, there's certain areas where, if it's truly unprotected, you know, we're a community where our fire department is on this side of town, you get to some areas that are probably pretty long response times, so they could be considered unprotected, especially with really long driveways. I know there's been some cases that the town or the fire department did require sprinklers and it was upheld because, because if they were an unprotected structure, so it was, but I think that's pretty rare. I don't think we'll get that case.
If the subdivision requires sprinklers, then it can be required.
No. We cannot, as a town, so years ago, all the fire chiefs went together and were trying to do the statewide to say, we want sprinklers, and we thought it would just go through because it was a very safety thing. And the insurance industry, they fought it because they would rather lose a house than lose 20 houses to water damage from it. So they fought it, and what passed was not only can you not do it, but the towns cannot go above that. And that was back in, I don't know, 2009 or 10, somewhere in there. So what we can do is we can say, you're putting in cisterns, which cost more money, and if the applicant says, we do consider this, we have right to, because they're asking for it, we have the right to leave the cistern for sprinklers, but we cannot require it for a subdivision.
Well, yeah, but what I'm asking is, once it's been waived, can?
Once it's on a plan approved, we can go by what the plan says, yes.
Okay, all right, that's what I wanted to know.
Yes.
Otherwise, it seems like sprinklers should not be allowed.
Once you have a plat, the plat changes, that's what you reapply, that supersedes everything.
Just, I might add, that law referred to single and two families for the requiring sprinklers, but many buildings, I believe the fire code just changed recently to now over five units, needs to have a, requires a sprinkler by state law. And just a quick add-on is that the last houses I sold up in, where they had sprinklers, they were renting about 7,000 a house to put in a sprinkler compared to a cistern at about 100,000 plus today. So depending on the number of houses, there may be a benefit to putting in sprinklers. The benefit to the homeowners also is that their insurance rate is crazy reduced low, because that's the biggest catastrophe your family could have, would be a buyer. So it is beneficial to the homeowners. So just a balancing point.
So, so I feel like maybe what I'm hearing is that, that maybe that it's changed in, if we were to amend it to allow either or, as long as we had parameters in place for the cistern design and warranty and stuff like that, that that would be sufficient for you? One other question for you would be, is there a preference, like, if someone came before you in, or, I made this, I'm not trying to word this correctly. I see the benefit of a cistern being that, again, it's not just one house, it's providing immediate water access for, for a fire department, for, you know, a certain amount of minutes of fire suppression for every house that's kind of within that area, whereas the sprinkler is obviously just a one house. Is there, is it kind of a pro and con as to like, which is better, or which you would prefer to see?
I mean, a cistern supplies us with water, right, for a water to work the whole job, whereas a sprinkler is, it's going to be out by the time, the sprinkler's going to be out of water by the time we get there.
Yeah.
And houses don't have a pipe to hook up to.
Right.
Like a commercial building, where you can feed that sprinkler, it goes, it's out, it's done. So, I mean, a cistern ideally is, in my eyes, better than a sprinkler, from our end.
Yeah.
Homeowners end up, yeah, sprinkler is better. It's there for us.
And it supports wildfires, so it's not just homes.
Right, right.
Yeah.
That's a good point, which we're seeing more of, obviously.
The, I think the first concrete cistern that we put in town was out off of Mitchell Road, I believe. That was put in in parts, I was going to say pieces, but it was put in in parts with a sealer between the parts, and if the parts aren't being supported adequately enough, then it just opened up. Did not hold water, I don't think it ever held water. I think they put in a new one that was more like a septic tank at that point.
It was natural, it's fiberglass now.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
The only other big ones, there's one on Puddle Street, Orteau Field Road, and there's one over on Strawberry Lane. Strawberry Lane is the most recent one.
And the recent one we saw with Shea was three or four separate tanks.
But I think they ended up doing.
With a connector between them. That, I guess, seems reasonable to me, because it's more or less like a septic tank.
That was kind of a special situation anyway, where it shouldn't have been, in my eyes, even called a cistern, it's a, their sprinkler system.
Yeah.
It shouldn't even have, meet the criteria of a cistern, in my eyes. I mean, it was part of their fire suppression system, right? It was their water supply.
Yeah.
Do you have access to it?
If we do at the end, yeah, I believe we will.
That makes it a cistern, right?
Well, at the end of the day, yes, but that's not what the fire, the fire code called for.
Copy that.
You know, it was just a tank to supply their buildings water on their personal property. It wasn't like it was a development where it's in a designated lot that's nobody owns, you know?
Would you?
Was it drinking water or anything like that?
No.
But, no, correct.
But it would, in my eyes, it would seem to be necessary to have some sort of a trust fund associated with that cistern that went in, whether it's fiberglass or concrete, that would help to pay maintenance on the thing over the years, because at some point in time, the town takes it out.
Well, it becomes part of a, if it's a major subdivision, most likely that would be part of an HOA. That's how we're trying to be better about our, having the covenants, right?
Shea's is Shea's is part of their building.
Right, but I mean, the normal subdivision.
Yep, they're ours. Once the town takes the subdivision, it's ours.
We're trying to make it, we've tried in the past, like, with that and even like the drainage structures, to make them stay within the HOA, because of the fact that a lot of these drainage structures are becoming more complex, they're not just a swale anymore, or something that's pretty low maintenance, they may have very technical requirements. So they give us performance and maintenance, like, documents on those, and we try to keep them within the HOA covenants now, that if they fail, so the town will have ability to go in and do it if they need to. But the ultimate responsibility is back to that development.
I hear you.
Yeah, yeah, but ideally, same thing with the cisterns, well, you know, they stay with the development.
Anyway, okay.
Appreciate that. Anything else for us? Appreciate it. Thank you for coming.
I guess I can go up there, I don't know what I'm going to say.
Yeah.
That'll be a first.
Yeah, exactly. You're so funny. Um, how's it going? Thank you for inviting me. This is obviously a first one of these I've ever been to, but I will say that I get all of the emails, I get all the documents I need when new developments are going in. I think they're pretty intricate, spell it out pretty easily. If I have a question, comment, concern, sometimes I'll go to her and say, I don't understand this, or whatever the case may be. But from a public safety police standpoint, again, all we're looking for, that's all I'm coming to this end, is that there's egress and degress, that we're not just landlocking people. In a case of like a big development, like the Maple Ridge one, that it didn't just end in a cul-de-sac, that we opened it up two ways. But that's all, you know, we're worried about on the police side of it, is that we can, you know, we're getting to those individuals, they have different ways out, they're not landlocked in that, because in any weather anomaly situation, if something goes down, they could be landlocked for, you know, a long time. That happens sometimes, like up at the lake area, on Apple Lakeview Drive. If something comes down over there, there, there's no way, there's no other way, there's no other street that goes to Beechwood Road that comes down, and, does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah.
Thinking about that, like, and I don't know where that could present itself, although since I've even been here 17 years ago, we have a lot of new developments and I, that I wouldn't think would have been there and thought of that situation, so.
Yeah, we're seeing more cul-de-sacs, obviously, and things like that, and then, you know, but one way we address it is, and I know it doesn't, it doesn't address all those potential scenarios, but it's the underground utilities being required for all new subdivisions, so that helps on the online situation, but it doesn't help with other, other emergency situations that might occur. So, so yeah, if there's any of that pop-up where it seems like there should be a second egress, even if it's like an emergency kind of access, you know, that kind of comment would be, would be really appreciated.
Yeah, no, and other than that, I mean.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Do you feel, and the same question for the fire chief, do you feel any sort of stress on your department because of development?
I mean, with anything, I mean, obviously, I can just speak to this, I don't think it's wicked rocket science. I think that whenever, obviously, you add population, that presents itself in different ways for calls for service for any event. I don't, I don't know if I can sit here and say, like, statistically, this is how many calls go up if you add Strawberry Lane, right? It's, it's a complex issue, but I think that common sense would tell you, yes, if you have more people, you know, living together, doing different things, driving on the roadways, of course, in my opinion, I've seen it, because like I said, since I've been here 17 years, we, we do get busy and busier because you're adding population. So I, I think it's directly correlated, and I hate to say this, like, it's not to say, I, I don't mean to say, like, it doesn't mean they're all doing bad things. A call for service could be anything. Do we all understand, like, it could be a loose dog, it could be a motor vehicle accident, or it could be a domestic, right, or a suicidal individual. It just depends. But whenever you add population, I think that you can make a common sense opinion that, of course, I, I definitely think that we get busier from that. That's how I feel. Matt? Okay.
Well, is there a breakpoint? I mean, you know, if, you know what our population is now, if we add 700 people, is this going to take it over the top? What?
No, no, no. I mean, I think that, like, as, and I have to say this for myself, when I started, it was a six officer police department, right? And now with my part timer, and if we're fully staffed, we're up to nine, eight full-time, one part-time. We've had to add positions, we get bigger. I mean, now the fire department has gone full-time, so I don't know how to answer that, but I mean, I think, yes, as your population increases, just like the FBI recommends, you will need more services. I, again, that, I don't think that's my opinion either. I think that's a common sense assessment of what happens when population increases.
Part of that, Vaughn, is that we're looking at, excuse me, Chief Woodman.
No, that's fine, you're good.
Is that, one of the things the planning board looks at is impact fees, and impact fees are direct, are directly associated with those impacts on various departments. So if you can say that with the increase in the population, you need to have another cruiser, you need to have a different location for your police department, or in some way that the increase in population and housing is putting on the department, then funds can be raised, if you will, through impact fees to help with that.
The future development, yeah. Yes, it's proportionate share, but.
Yeah, I mean, I'm glad, you know, we're having these open conversations. Obviously, you guys know that I'm looking, you know, to get, to move our PD or, and get a new, you know, wherever it is, better, whatever, and it might not even happen in 20 years, but the point is, is that the visionary is thinking, like, we, we're outgrowing our area. I think what you would really have to do, and this would just be my assessment, is the FBI does a lot of research on this, like, for crime and with calls for service that we get, and they recommend, like, a certain population, every, you know, every 5,000 resident should have this many officers. And I will say, and I don't know the numbers particularly, but I could Google it as I sit down, technically speaking, the police department is short-staffed compared to what population we have. I can ethically tell you that, based on what the FBI study suggests and what we are per thousand, or whatever the, the thing is, you know, we're like two officers or three officers short. Now, again, I'm not saying that, you know, we're do or die right now, but I, I think it would be great to be visionary and to plan, of course, if we're adding, that's something that you guys should definitely be thinking of, because it's, it's not just us, it's the recycling centers, the rec department, they're going to have more kids at aftercare, I mean, it's anything that you, you do. To say that it doesn't change anything, I, that wouldn't be my opinion. My opinion is, of course, it does. People have been around a lot longer than me, as it's a different Nottingham than, and not wrong, I'm just saying it is, that, you know, looks different, right, population-wise and everything, more, so.
Yeah, so part of that is that, you know, so the CIP, the Capital Improvement Plan, goes hand in hand with part of the planning board in that, same thing with the fire department, but that was somewhere, we need to see if anything's going to might get, maybe get added on to the CIP for additional things, like, like an additional fire truck or ambulance, or something like that, or a substation, not that that's being proposed, I'm just throwing out examples, because of the increase in growth and things like that. Same thing with the police station. So we can implement
Right.
the impact fees, but it has to have that CIP component to it.
Gotcha.
And then we have to have a study done to then come up with a cost, that would then be applied to new development. So again, it's, obviously, every house that comes in after us, everything that the current residents have invested in only benefits those future residents as well. So it's a way to kind of shift that cost a little bit in a proportion of share. So with fire, we're, unless something gets added this year, that's probably going to get zeroed out, because that was originally put in to cover the bond. We added the rec department from Marston a few years ago, maybe more than a few, but I don't think there's anything for police yet, or the rec center.
Need to hear from them.
So, so those are a couple of areas. Again, impact fees are very limited. There's off-site improvements that we've never really done, except for maybe cisterns, but they're pretty limited in scope. It's, you know, usually new things that are needed in relation to development, but they can be used for, like, studies. So like, if, like, the school used that, some of the fees for the study for the potential build-out of a school, the school, and you can use the fees for that, too.
So can impact fees be used as a, to conduct a study on where to put a new police station?
I would believe so. We'd probably send it through council, just to make sure, but I know when the school did theirs, I believe their council confirmed that they could use the fees for the, the study or the design piece of it. It just can't be added for, like, you know?
More for the design, I believe.
Yeah.
Is that something that extends over a period of time? Study is just a short thing, so impact means it's not part of that typically, unless they're combined.
So, so we already have approval for impact fees, so it's not, it's a little bit easier to implement new ones. My understanding is that we would just have to hold public, public hearings and notice them, so it wouldn't have to be done, like, in the January to March timeframe, only, like warrant articles, so, but we, usually does correlate towards, like, the CIP season, so that we know, and we have that document to then send out for, for a professional to assess for us, because it's usually done by, you know, it's usually contracted out.
Yeah, I mean, if you're, like, I, this is the first I'm hearing that, like, potentially, right, the police department, or to do a study even on the design or whatever, could use those fees. I mean, of course, that would be great. I, I think that would be a very ethical thing to do as well, that where, you know, I've, I've stated that we've had a problem, these are the choices that we have, and how do we go about it? Last year, I, you know, put something in for 40,000, you know, to get the development, or, you know, pay the fees to do that, and, you know, if there's something that we can do to help that process or get a committee together, you know, again, I don't know all the ins and outs, but I think that's a very ethical way to do it, in the right way, if you, you know, gather people in that can think of different things, or.
Yeah, and that goes for all the departments, so there's, the impact fees can be used for certain things, but I think we just nailed them. Fire, police, I think the recycling, roads are a little bit, it's pretty limited, and then rec is, is, I think, the five items that we can, we can assess impact fees for.
Yeah, cool. Like I said, the only understanding I've ever had of impact fees in our town is that they go to the school or the fire department. I never knew that they could go.
They can be, they just, yeah, haven't been.
Which is fine, I mean, I'm not judging, I'm, they obviously probably needed it, or whatever the case may be, but don't forget about us.
Yeah.
But, but again, like, you know, so when we're thinking of that, that, you know, you know, it's like, I look like the bad person coming and saying, oh, we do need a new facility, and when we have growth, I mean, they're going to need it, you know, when my time is done, too, like, that, if they don't have it, that's not going to stop, they, you know, so.
Yeah.
Does that help?
Does.
Anybody have any questions for me? Teresa, why you got me here?
No, I, thank you.
Appreciate you, appreciate you coming in, too.
Thank you for coming.
No, no problem. I'll hang around, and I'll see you in one of these meetings.
All right. Any other, any other department heads that wanted to come up and speak towards this? I see rec, I see building inspector. I think there's probably a couple I don't recognize.
Doesn't say it can be used for studying.
I know it doesn't say, but.
It does not say.
I think really the thing that has, you know, impacts the rec are the impact fees that we have from Marston. And Vaughn was just talking about the growth, yes, I think, you know, I've been here going on nine years, I think, so in the past nine years that I've been here, our programs have definitely gone up. Summer camp is nearing more over 100 kids that we have here in this building. Aftercare, we have 75 enrolled right now with a waitlist of around 30, 35 kids. And we're, we're limited to the, to the space at the school, so we're also kind of outgrowing our area here a little bit, but with this space that we have here, we have more rooms, we have more ability to kind of get kids in different areas, so we can actually have more kids here than we can at the school. So I would say that, that our big children programs are probably one of our biggest needs here. That's something that I've also found, or childcare is kind of lacking. We have two-day cures only in this town. So I think the more growth we have, that impact of kids and families moving in, that's going to put a string on childcare. And so, with that said, we're trying to do what we can with creating a fundraising, a friends group for the rec, to try and see if we can get some residents to help with that. And we're also, the last board meeting, trying to put together a committee for recreation as well, to kind of help with some future planning and things like that. But as far as, we used some impact fees this past year over at Marston, I will say also that, I mean, it's helpful for us to have those funds. We are probably, we just built two more fields, and we have a multi-purpose field at Marston, but, you know, I don't see. Um, but, you know, I don't see, we're pretty much at capacity that way as well. With Northern Strikers, with the Nottingham Youth Association and with our programs, there really isn't any time for other people to use it. So our fields are pretty much all use. Softball's a little bit lower in numbers than the other sports, but that's kind of what I see as far as the rest side goes.
Yeah. And thank you for that. And obviously, there's a lot going on. It's, it has changed a lot in the twelve years I've been here for what the offerings are, but it's not just, I think you touched upon a lot of the things that are done for the youth, but I know there's so many other programs for adults and then the community as a whole. Marston being a good example of, you know, a walking trail that has been developed and newest is the disc golf, which I don't know if it's open yet, but disc golf course, which is for all abilities, all ages, all, you know. So those kind of things where it's kind of free recreation that's gets people out and moving, I think, is is great. And again, that it's done for all levels within our our community.
Agreed. Yeah.
It's great for that.
That's definitely one of my personal goals is to try to get that property specifically for a broader audience. Um, you know, the funds that were raised and were raised for those beautiful fields that we have, but also there is that walking trail that's took a lot of effort from a lot of volunteers and had a lot of cars on there. And it's beautiful to walk right now. Disc golf, we have three trails marked. So we're getting volunteers out to cut down some stuff to get those all set. And then, um, you know, looking for what's next is kind of that that next piece to what people want there. But to get all ages out to enjoy it is really part of our goals.
Yeah. So for for us, is there anything you see that we could? I mean, obviously, like, you know, subdivisions, things like that, if they're adding population, potentially adding utilization or burden, whichever we want to use, whatever we want to use there, but to all departments, but to the rec department as well. Um, is there anything you see that we could do differently or that we could add or that you that your department may be adding to like the CIP? That would then be able to amend the the way the impact fees are written now for rec? Because right now, rec is, I think, the rec impact fees are specifically to Marston and what was planned out.
Yeah.
You credit system before you move to talk about impact fees. Impact fees can only be spent on new capital group projects.
Yep.
Can't fix anything with them. You can't change anything with them. You can't do this. You're very specific on what you're used of those projects. The reason why rec has now is its fire department, I believe, you paid off the fire department. So you took the fees that were given to them, go there. If someday Chief Woodman gets a fire department, her impact fee account might go up a lot higher in order to pay that that down and rec might lose money. Because it can always be changing to where the town needs it to go with those departments. But just for people at home, impact fees can't just go anywhere.
No, they're very specific.
Just to be specific, because this conversation seems to be going a lot broader, wider. It is a very specific thing you can do with impact fees.
Yeah, they're they're, thanks Vaughn, they're very, very specific within the RSA is what they could be used for. And then again, they have that capital improvement piece of it. The only reason I keep bringing them up is because we're getting into that budgetary season, CIP's meeting. Um, so if things are gonna get in there, I think the more people are aware of how that works, the better so that, you know, it comes back.
May I ask a question?
Of course.
Um, first of all, the trails that you built, they're great. Um, I got the little patch we did all ten.
Wonderful.
Yeah, we're there at least once or twice a week.
Cool.
We try to do as much as we can, try to get out there. You you said that you've you've sensed some sort of an increase in your participants.
Yeah.
Right? And how much of that is an increase based on our community growth? New people coming into town? Or is it the success of your program everybody wants to get in?
I don't, I have, I don't know.
Right, so that's the hard part.
That's a hard.
Chicken and egg, kind of.
That's a hard question to answer. Um, I I I don't know. I can't get into that. But I hope it's a little bit of both personally.
It's one of the things we want to consider, right? Because when we look at developments, we, you got somebody wants to put in eighteen houses. I'm doing the math in my head. How many people is that? How many children are they gonna have? We're trying to figure that out and that's why we ask these questions.
Yeah, and I will say, like, as far as our numbers go for summer camp and aftercare, we see a lot of kindergarten and a lot of first grade. Um, so we see a lot of the younger kids that utilize our programs. And as they get older, they kind of go to different things and age out. But we have retained a lot of those older kids. We also hire them and they become employees and stuff like that. So, um, I don't know. It's a hard question to ask, um, or answer. But I'd like to say, I think, kind of what Vaughn was going with, with with new homes, obviously new families. I don't know what that significance is.
All right. Well, they're not coming with eighteen kids.
They're not.
Nowadays, right? It's, you know, one or two at best.
Yeah.
Do we have any curves of of impact versus, um, of population?
What's the population? How much is it growing?
So I was gonna, I was gonna off you up some, some insight on that. So the population in twenty-ten was about forty-eight hundred. In twenty-twenty is about fifty-two hundred. So you have an increase of about.
Four percent, four or five percent.
Um, uh, yeah, no, I'm gonna be a little close with ten percent, four hundred people, something like that. A little bit less than ten percent. The school age, school enrollment, which is this is the sidebar for me, is a statistic that I really like because populations are estimates. School enrollment is pretty spot on because you count the kids that enroll, right? It's a kid. So you know, the schools have a good handle on it. So it really is a solid number for tracking trends. In the twenty-thirteen, twenty-fourteen year, you had seven hundred and forty-seven total. In last, two years ago, twenty-two, twenty-three, you had seven hundred and sixty-two. So that's an increase of fifteen people in a ten-year period. One thing to note, this is kind of, I'm just, because I've got the time sitting here. One of the numbers that changed significantly is the number of elementary. It went from three hundred and seventeen down to two hundred and sixty. The other ones, middle school stayed the same. And high school popped up a little bit, uh, from two fifteen to two eighty. So the trend in the elementary is downward significantly, three hundred and twenty to two hundred and sixty.
Parents are going from fifty-two.
You are seeing less and less. And you'll see that number.
Or four to three. That's.
You'll see that number evidence in household size, average household size. That's a statistic that we also, the census tracts, it's another one that we try to use. Because and you'll see average household sizes are going down. I can't find it on this right now. I'm sure it's on here, but it is, it is what we'll see. So point is, population's going up, say, eight percent. School enrollment's going up. You know, maybe about the same.
Really?
Eight.
Maybe like fifteen now?
But these are good trends. These are good trends.
Yeah, I think they're touching on it, you guys. Um, but, um, it is something, it's something you mind. I think I think you made an interesting point, um, about, uh, you retaining kids, right? Um, so that would be, you know, that can be interpreted in any number of ways, but that is a good, a good thing to see. You're doing something that the community, um, offers. The quick, the quick question I wanted to ask, and I don't want to dive too far because this is, you know, maybe getting into like more of a planning issue, but like, you talked about childcare, you talked about funding, um. Where was the need? Uh, like, is it at the younger age? Is it at older age? Like finding kids, good positive things to do? Is it young kids just needing some, someplace to go after school? Um, did you, is there anything, like, if you were to start getting funding, where would you target it? What would you use it for? Um, from a program or from a target audience, I guess?
I think I would, I would say more of the older population, seniors. Um, we have.
Seniors, elderly.
Elderly, yeah.
Okay.
Um, we also do a lot for for them and we work with the library hand in hand to try to offer things for people to stay in town, um, then do things here locally versus go outside of town. Um, so our school age programs are doing great. We don't have to cap anything. We don't, you know, except for aftercare currently. But, um, those are pretty good, pretty well-oiled machines. Um, I think the the stuff like disc golf, the recreation for all to use, um, green spaces, that kind of stuff would be more of what I perceive being a need.
You know, I was even thinking at some point it would be, the trails are great for those of us that have good mobility.
Yeah.
But for a senior having a track for them to walk around would be ideal.
Or some ADA trails as well that are paved and smoother for people to use. But yeah, I agree, something because our roads aren't really safe to.
They are not.
They're scary and I see a lot of people walking. Um, so yeah, something like that for for folks to, again, stay here in town instead of outsource pickleball. Um, that is something that comes up all the time. Um, those are a lot, that's a lot of money to get a court dismay. Um, but that's active, seniors, active elderly population as well. So that is where I see our need being. Um, obviously, the kids and the youth is what we do really well, but we're trying to go to that.
The seniors will.
Yeah, I think so. We got a really good group.
Is there room for that on this local field?
Uh, for what?
Before you set a track.
A track. There is a. There's plans for a track developed on Marston, um, that were developed, you know, years and years ago.
What's that here?
Marston's on Milpon Road, two twenty-nine Milpon, yeah.
Flood's a little bit less.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's one of the, yeah.
Yeah.
You mentioned that you were at capacity.
For what?
That's what you said. You said, I'm at capacity. I'm wondering what, where?
Uh, our office space, number one. I have three full-time employees and we're operating out of a very small room with very little storage. So, um, the more stuff we add, it it makes the stuff we keep, we have a lot of stuff.
Yeah, I can imagine.
So that's kind of what I meant by that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I believe there's a plan in place to get you some more space, right?
Goodness.
Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you very much for coming in. I appreciate it.
Thanks for having me.
Of course. Sylvia, you wanna pop on up, the building inspector?
Blair, that number was five, five eighty-six from two thousand and ten to two thousand and twenty-two. Five hundred eighty-six people, um, for fifty-three seventy-one. Quite to the community profile, I think that you guys did. And then, um, household size was, has gone down from two point, just incidentally, but, you know, two and a half to just a hair on two and a half, basically, people per house.
They're counting my dog.
Sylvia.
Yeah, I know. Hey, Dell.
Hello, thank you for having me. Um, I have three or four things I'd like to talk about tonight. Uh, some of them philosophical and some very specific things. And I don't know how much you want to get into the weeds of it. Uh, the first thing I'd like to talk about, and this is based upon the situation that we're currently experiencing right now with one of our subdivisions. Um, some things slipped through the cracks. And I feel like in general, a lot of the applicants kind of like play us because we're a small town and they approach more of let's ask for forgiveness than permission type thing. And they'll go through the planning board and the planning board does, you guys do an exceptional job. But as a town, all of us working together, I feel like we have a lot of room for improvement. Um, what I've been working on, and I've been working with Ed and Blair and some other stuff, I'm putting together this whole new package. It's basically a checklist. And it doesn't change anybody's work and it doesn't add anything to anybody. But what I'd like to do is the concept that I'm coming up with is that there's one master checklist for everything. And that doesn't get into the weeds of each individual department. But it starts when the applicant comes in, the very first day, this is what we expect from you. This is what you have to provide us. It'll start with, um, Alana going through the pre-checklist phase. It'll follow the applicant through, like right now, we all do our own checklist and it gets put in a folder somewhere. This is gonna stay through the whole process. And it would start with the applicant. It can find it right online so they know what we're looking for. It'll go through the pre-checklist. It'll go through the planning board. And then, once we get to the planning board, it's gonna be a way of me to know, a summary, a quick checklist of what needs to be required, things like that, when it needs to be done. The road agent would be included. What we have going on right now is we have a subdivision where everything was done right and everything was done that we were asked for, but there was no bond. They started doing work without a bond. Now, that doesn't mean that we did anything wrong because at the process, but then they started doing work. And we're like, what are you doing? And they said, no one told me. Technically, we didn't. They knew what they were doing. They played us and they didn't do anything wrong. But it's a loophole into the system. And I kind of want to just tighten everything up and not, I'm not adding any work to any department at all. It's like you tell me what you're required for, what your department wants, the expectations. And there's gonna be this master checklist and it'll finish with the board of selectmen. Because ultimately, in four or five years down the road, this is how long this is gonna be, the board has to release the bond at whatever point they feel comfortable that the roads are done and wherever we're at. But it's gonna go through everything. And that's kind of what I'm doing right now. I've got a rough draft already. Like I said, I've worked with a couple of people in this room. Um, I'm gonna submit it to all of you before we put it in. It's nothing that needs to be voted on, so we don't have to have this done as far as changing the process before the next cycle. This is just a checklist that we're gonna do. It's something we can do on our own. It's not the voters or anything, so it's not a timeframe on this. Um, once I come up with a draft, I'm gonna submit it to, I'll submit it to Ed and he can decide what he wants to do with it. But it's kind of a way of just tying us all together. That that's the direction I'd like to see. And this is just for subdivisions. Now, does anybody have any questions on that or the concept of it?
This is input and actually, actually, right to.
Yeah, yeah. So basically, basically, what it is, in our subdivision regs and our site planning regs, we have a lot of deadlines. We have a lot of requirements in there. If we don't specifically state them, sometimes applicants say, I didn't know about it. Doesn't matter if it, in the end, if it's in there, yeah, so. So and it puts time, puts times on things, too. So again, like a new road going in, they're supposed to be, that's supposed to be being overseen as to when they start cutting the road in. Like every day or every week, it's supposed to have a check as to, yep, you cut it down to the right, you put the right fill in, the right depth, the right subcourse to the design. Otherwise, you know, once it's, once the roads are paved, it's pretty hard to go back in unless you do a core and a bunch of spots to check to make sure that they had the right substrate and compaction rate. Um, so again, it's, I think we getting a little bit with the blinders on is we do all this work up till conditional approval and approval. And then it's, it leaves our desk and it's kind of goes to someone else's plate, someone else's problem.
We, I I haven't been here long enough to experience and see this and know this. Do we have an engineer that actually goes to the site and reviews the road being built and inspects and provides a report at the expense of the applicant?
That's a good question. That's part of the.
That is one of the requirements. However, in this case, the person started building the road without doing anything. And then they are saying, oh, it's just a logging road at this point, which is legal. It's a loophole. But then what happens after the road is already done and they're like, oh, my road's done. Well, we didn't get to do any inspections. See what I'm saying? I'm trying to bring everything in.
It's been done.
Now, as far as the specifics, what you two gentlemen are talking about as every detailed checklist, none of that's gonna be in there, otherwise this document would be six hundred pages long, you know? As working, like, talking with Alana, she has a very elaborate checklist. We're not putting her whole checklist in here because that's what she does. What we're gonna do is we're gonna put the topics so we can go back to the department head and say, is this done? Are we good to proceed? We don't have to redo everything. It's really giving everybody input.
But but what good is it going to do if you have a developer who just goes off and goes, I got my approval and starts doing the road?
It's giving us more awareness of when to start checking on things and how to check things and see what was required. Um, right now.
But you don't, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but once we approve a case and you even have it conditionally, you don't know that we've approved the case?
I do, but let's switch cases, the one that we're talking about to another one. I'm working on another case right now and Ed and I had a meeting this, but there's six hundred pages on one of the reports, literally six hundred pages.
Yeah.
I, and I am not an engineer, so.
I get that, but what I'm, you're saying.
I know when it is approved.
Okay.
But.
But even the conditions of some of them.
We only put in two or three conditions for approval at the most. What I'm saying is, if at the, once we've approved a case, I don't have any in here, but she writes up a page that gets filed that says, case twenty-four zero zero three, approved with conditions, blah, 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 and that gets posted. That's not enough of a notice for you to know?
This isn't just about you, the planning board. I don't mean to make that sound rude. This isn't just about the planning board. This is about. This is about, like right now, a road is going in, the road agent, he doesn't, you know, unless somebody tells him or whatever, or he initiates it, going back to the applicant and having our engineers involved. We have to notify our engineers or make sure that the applicant does. This is all being processed over. It's not just the planning board decisions. This is making sure every department that has input on this has input and make sure that it's done.
So there needs to be, it sounds like somebody that once a case is approved, that like the next day or within the next few days, because we meet on Wednesday, a Friday calling and saying, um, sending out that notice to the building inspector, the road guy.
But it's, but it's not just the town people. It's also the builder.
She does.
It's the applicant. Yeah. So it's also bringing awareness back to the applicant level. And then if it's a checklist and they see it, or not even a checklist, but it's like, almost like a bulleted item of like, okay, here's these things. There's timelines of the road, the inspections, um, the cut, you know, when they can cut and, and things like that, which go back to even the alteration of terrain permits, the, the state may mandate when they can cut, which might not be on our conditions. Um, it's just to try to bring that awareness. And then if the developer sells off the, the lots, which are the, uh, the development, which happens quite frequently, um, the next person can't, can't play, uh, you know, they can't say like, oh, I didn't know because there's nothing written. It's not in the conditions that says I have a bond due for the road or.
Thought we were commenting on that.
Here is that, you know, you know, like some of these plans have sixty pages chock full of engineering technical data. And those in themselves are conditions that, um, unless you're an engineer to follow. Um, and we, we seek out engineering and Blair's expertise and, um, upside engineers to review these plans. But what, what happens when it leaves here, you know, some, some guy in an excavator or a truck is supposed to know about the nine hundred pages of that plan and all the conditions and all that. It's, it's.
Or that this thing should be done before that truck comes in on that property.
Right. In this case, no one told that individual, even though he's an expert and he does this for a living and he knows, in this case, no one told him that. So he went and did it. He circumvented it. And that's what I'm trying to stop.
And that's why in the last, yeah.
You're not going to do something until this is finished. Then you do the next thing. That would help the process.
Exactly. I'm not looking to add any new rules at all. I'm looking to clarify what our rules are, who is responsible for them and at what point.
And put them in sequence.
Right.
Let me ask you this. You just stated that it was a experienced developer who obviously knows the rules and decided to, what's, what's the penalty?
That's not up for me to.
But, but you can make all the checklists you want. And if somebody is going to go around you.
That is my point. What, what would be, we didn't tell them that they needed to. So we're saying there's no penalty. Yes, they knew they had to. They're saying, he's saying, no one told me.
I highly doubt it.
Of course, of course not. And that's what I'm trying to fix.
In a lot of court was dug up, paved over Thanksgiving weekend and dug up because it had not been processed through the, the engineer and everyone else. They went out, did the core samples. They weren't right. They weren't correct. They had to dig it up and do it again.
There's a precedent for you.
Who made them do that? Who made them fix it? Because I'm wondering, what's the enforcement arm here?
That's, that's what I'm wondering.
No occupancy permits would be the.
Who says it's not good to go when it's done and you're next to go on the next step?
The selectman made them do it?
Yeah.
So that's why there's supposed to be the checks and balance with, with a road specifically, a new road going in where there's the checks as to how frequently they're supposed to be inspected, who is supposed to inspect them. Um, but, but if someone does go in and throw in, puts in a road without all those things, what's ramifications?
Right.
It's, it's legal.
As a negative experience, that we're saying somebody did something wrong because we have to be very careful.
Right.
Nobody did in this case. I want to look for future ones to say, this is what our expectations are. And we're going to tell you, we're not going to say what the planning board's going to decide. Obviously, all the engineers, you guys are going to figure all that together. This is the process.
And it provides content, continuity is the other piece. So, you know, Dale's been here for a few years for us and it provides continuity, which is great. But we saw it when there was a vacant seat in the land use clerk department. Alana's done amazing and very thankful that Alana's in that position. But when there wasn't somebody in there or there was transitions, you quickly saw all the pieces that could get missed and dropped. Um, and same thing with the building inspector. If Dale has to go out or, you know, or someone else comes in, it's providing that continuity. So it's not, you know, and having like a quick list of something that they can go and say, yep, I got it. You know, I know I have to go back to the plans and review it, but it's easy to have like these couple of pages right here of, of what we're really looking at, um, and that applied to this specific application. Because it could be years that before, a year, two years before an approval occurs, a conditional approval to an approval to actual development occurring.
And I get that once they get their approval, they want to get going. But I still think that, to me, there's no sense in having pages or checklists if there's no hammer behind it, if you will.
Well, I think that goes back to the select board.
One of the things we don't do as part of our subdivision regs is require a note on the plan that says, here's the stuff you have to check with our town engineers or the road agent or the building inspector. That can be a standard notes that's on there and now they know it.
Yeah, I think.
That's an excellent idea.
But I think, I don't know what could be allowed. I don't know what could be allowed on the plans and you start running out of room for the registry. So the registry starts to control a little bit of on them, the part that gets recorded for the Mylar. I don't know if there would be sufficient space in there to put all the, all those things, but we require and you don't.
I guess it could be on the plan, but as I said, you know, there are limitations. They're only interested in certain things and.
The registry.
The registry. And, you know, they will dictate to you what they do. Where it could appear is you could draw some, you could put it in the notice of decision, you know, we could.
Right.
And we've talked about, of course, I think our standard notes, our standard set of conditions that would be attached to virtually any, uh, notice of decision. Because that notice of decision is the official town record that this person has gotten approval, right? The signing of the Mylar's was large in front of the registries and they can record it. As far as this board is concerned in terms of how, what it, it is supposed to do and what it's required to do. But again, how's the enforcement, um, you know, the administrative side of decisions that the board makes?
Can you investigate, you guys, that's what fifteen or so towns, what some other towns are doing with respect to, um, the, the decision? If there's like a template they, they're using. Like we're, we're doing our own decision. We're wording and oh yeah, throwing that condition and yeah, we're, we're piecemealing it together in some cases, I think. Uh, very complicated plans. Is there a template out there that we might steal from?
I'm going to say is we'll tell you what you have to have in there minimally. And then what each town interprets that to be and wants it to be just evolves over time. I'll, I can show you fifteen different towns. I'll show you, you'll see fifteen different notice of decision templates. What you guys are doing for your decisions are, um, devising, um, unique tailored conditions for a particular project. And what I, you know, what we're referring to is like a standard set of conditions. Like you have one year, you know, you have one year to get this thing going. You have to do, you know, you cannot, you know, per RSA, blah, 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 you cannot sell a lot or pull a billing permit until you have approved roadway signed off by the town because you don't have frontage until then. You know, you could have some basic ones that would be applicable on virtually every scenario.
And that way we could just, instead of referring, instead of reading out all these, because again, that goes back to like the strength, the strength of the motion. So if the motion says, and our standard set of conditions, we should have a document called standard set of conditions, like, you know, and that's what we're referring to, the conditions as outlined in staff memo dated, whatever. So, so that's part of it. We do have a checklist, I think, in our, in our binders, um, you know, where we can write stuff down and, and make for our motions, but I, I think again, it's just, it's trying to make things a little bit easier for everybody and continuity as the board changes over as, you know, for staff and for, for all the various departments to, um, and then it, I think it adds to that. Again, we don't have the enforcement side at all on this here, but it adds a little bit of weight, I think, for the town to have enforcement. They can't say, I didn't know. Because they say, well, it's right here and you did know and, you know, you get efficient twice. So you're going to get a cease and desist or.
And if you have a checklist, is that enforceable?
So I, in my, in my opinion, if it's in our subdivision regulations, the subdivision reg, in, in an applicant comes through, they're bound by the items in that unless they've asked for a waiver.
Okay. So that's enforceable, I have.
Same thing with zoning, unless they've asked for a variance.
Checklist need to be enhanced to get the, I'll say the, again, I'm going to say input and extra criteria. And you do this before you do this, before you do that, which I think is where you're headed.
You, you guys are, I'm sorry to interrupt, but. Go ahead. I, I feel like you guys are heading a little bit more down the punitive. You're doing this wrong and we're going to get you. And that's not what the intent of this is. The intent is, is to make our process more streamlined of what we're doing and getting everybody to work together and taking away those loopholes before they can do anything, you know, and play us. So I'm not looking to be punitive because those are already in place. I can already go in and issue a cease and desist, you know, ultimate authority right there and.
Well, that's what I was asking you.
What's that?
Well, that's what I was asking you is when you said it was.
I, I can do that right now. We did that on a different case in town, which is neither of these two cases, I've issued a cease and desist this year.
Okay.
We went in and we shut a place down and we said, go back and see the planning board and play by the rules. And then I'll take the cease and desist. So we shut them down.
Okay. Well, that's what I was wondering.
So I think the problem was that the bond wasn't required for the subdivision that he, that had the problem. And so because that, that part requiring the bond
Yep.
was missed.
Not only that, and the road was started without inspections by, which isn't even my area. I don't do those inspections. A private engineer does with the oversight of the road agent. And this was already happening. So like you're saying, when the plan gets done and gets approved, you send it out to everybody? Yes, we have it. They don't have to build the road for a year. We don't know when they start doing stuff and they just went and did it on their own. This is the point, like it's on the applicant and they said, no one told me. Did they do anything wrong? No, they didn't. Are they playing the system? A hundred percent. If we put this in writing and say, this is our expectations.
Yeah.
And then this department head is responsible for this, this one for this, it's not going to be a whole new checklist. And I go back and when I, before I do my CO, I go to the road agent, did you get everything you needed? Alana, did you get everything you needed? And then it's, this isn't like a complicated thing. This is meant to be just the opposite. It's meant to pull us all together, including the applicant and treating the applicant as one of our partners in this process. Uh, that's a sketchy word there, like partner, but it's bringing the applicant in and letting them, you know, we're not playing games. We're saying this is what we want. That's all this is for.
Yeah.
The other thing is certification of occupancy cannot be provided also. And then you get into some.
But then you get legal fights and expenses to the town too. So, so yeah.
For the, the hammers, there's a bunch of them that do exist.
Okay.
But you got to call them out in some fashion.
Yeah.
And, and it, and it takes some to do that. The other one is Garrison Road. Tony Fernal called me and said, how come there's a road going in through here? It used to be just a driveway. And I went out and I said, well, they did a subdivision and stuff. And they hadn't laid down any of the road correctly. And, and it was well beyond a forestry road at that point in time, well beyond.
We find out about most of this stuff when a neighbor complains and we get a complaint.
There you go.
That's literally how we find out about most of these things.
Yeah.
That's what I'm trying to avoid is saying, before you cut down a tree, before you put a shovel in the ground, you have to do this, this and this. That's all.
And here's the time, and here's the timelines on it. So yeah, I think we should keep moving forward with that. I know, and then we'll, it'll come back before us. We can look at it and, and that'd be a separate meeting. But yeah, I think we should definitely keep moving forward with the, uh, the checklist. Anything that makes it easier for everybody.
And, and as I said, is no timeframe on that as far as, this isn't something that goes to the voters or has, it's not part of the zoning ordinance. So we have time. Uh, the second philosophical topic I want to talk about is the same thing we talked at length about this last year. And we did nothing. And I just want to bring it up again. It doesn't change anything. But I would like the boards to consider talking about this. I don't care what the rules are. You can tell me any rule here, as long as it's legal and we treat everybody the same, I'll enforce any rule you want. I don't care. But we have these subdivision regs. We have the zoning ordinance. We have all of this stuff. We, on a regular basis, people will not meet it because a lot of them, these, most of our, not most, but a lot of our sites started as campsites and they're very, very tiny lots. And we go through this and I deny it and it goes to the ZBA and the ZBA waves it on a regular basis. And I'm not saying either side is right or wrong. It doesn't make a difference.
You're talking about the setbacks.
Septic.
I'm, I'm really talking about, well, setbacks is one, but what I'm really talking about is ADUs.
Oh.
Again, we just approved another detached ADU. And if that's what we want to do, I don't care. That's fine. Let's change the rules. But like, the idea, and this is a state thing, like an ADU is designed to be attached, is to be help your kids or your elderly parents. It's not multifamily. And we're allowing people to build ADUs separate and that's really multifamily. And there's a process for that. If they want to do that, they should go through the planning board and get multifamily and we'll approve that. But the regulations are stricter. So they do ADUs, we do detach, and then I say no and the ZBA says yes. And I'm just saying, I really think the two boards should talk and we should just all be on the same page, whatever it is. I don't care. But right now, the process is basically, you come to me, I say no, you spend six hundred dollars or whatever it is to go through the process and then you get cleared. And that's not what we should be doing. I would just ask that the planning board and the ZBA and maybe even the board of selectmen, that we just decide what our intent is.
And I do have that on as our second or item for potentially addressing on the zoning is, uh, is ADUs and discuss if, if we want to look at detached and, and my notes on that, you know, things that would, there would be a lot of considerations that we have to, to think about.
There's a thousand considerations if you want. That's almost like saying, if you want to give somebody an ADU, even though you're living in space on it, they better have four acres. Because if you want to have a car or a condo in this, in this town, you have to have four acres, two acres per unit.
Mm-hmm.
So if somebody wants to come in for an ADU and they're only on an acre and a half or, or two acres, they don't qualify.
How about seventy?
Well, seventy acres, way different.
Is what he's talking about. The case that came before us last week had seventy.
That's not the point. The point is.
It is two.
But what's, what's, I guess, but what's the hardship in that? So why, so why?
Why couldn't they just apply for, and I don't want to get into specifics, but why didn't they just apply from what their family done and get whatever they wanted?
Yeah.
Well, that's one, you know, one thing to remember is that an ADU requires that, that the owner live on site. They don't have to live in either one. When you have multifamily, you can have an absentee landlord. That's when you create problems because you have no home site facility. So ADUs are entirely different than multifamily.
And the other part to this, and the other part to this is the state book allows for a detached ADU. Six seventy-four, colon, seventy-three. So it wasn't like we jumped out on a limb and said, the heck with it.
But, yeah, the state, the state allows it, but the town has restricted it. So the town could be more restrictive. And this is an area where the town currently is more restrictive. And then the state RSA specifically states the town may require additional, uh, building area.
Correct.
Which.
Which is what we looked at and when we saw that they had a large space.
Right. I'm not saying the ZBA is wrong. Maybe we should just be changing the rules.
Well, that's one of the things we are talking about tonight.
But they could come in, that same person could come in then after they got their ADU, detached ADU approved on, and then come back in and, and subdivide it off sixty-eight of the, of the two acre, of the seventy acres, leaving a two acre lot that now has just two acres. So they've created multifamily without having to meet our multifamily.
That's not a multifamily. That's what I was saying.
But I'm saying, was there a size restriction placed on the ADU besides our seven fifty or did they get?
Yeah.
You know, so I know we have seven fifty, but I'm just saying.
The state has it too.
The accessory dwelling, it's up to us again for our, our zoning if we require, is my understanding.
Yes, for, for a detached, you can require higher.
So we do, yeah, owner occupied, single family dwelling.
But it is not, I just want to make sure it's clear that these are not multifamilies. You can't live off site. Someone, the owner has to live on site. Cannot say that they can, they have to live in the primary, but they do have to live on site.
But who checks, and I think that goes back to.
It's attached to the garage, their garage. Their house is here. The garage is going here. Because of the well, because of septic, because of the, the farmland and stuff, there was no other place for them to go. I think before you started changing and looking at what the zoning board is doing, attend the meeting and look at all of the other conditions that we're talking about here. It's not like we're going, huh, yeah, you've got all these, yeah, we'll find it.
This is not about the zoning board. Please don't take it that way. That is not what I'm saying at all.
No, I know you're not, but what I'm saying and what I'm. No, I know you're not, but what I'm saying and what I'm hearing here is this, this, this about it. It's like, there are other considerations for it and every single case that comes before the zoning board is looked at individually. We look at what are your hardships? What do you have for property and what are you looking at trying to do? We're not looking at having somebody build a detached ADU that's all by itself and then a little while later they can sell that off as a two acre parcel. That wasn't the case at all. It's part of the garage so that a father can go in, an elderly parent. It's like, really?
But that's the job of the ZBA.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And changing the rules, just so the ZBA doesn't have to look at it, to me, doesn't make a whole lot of sense because then we don't need a ZBA.
That's not what I'm saying at all.
No, no, I know. I'm just putting it out there. They have a job to do and so, you know.
But it could be the other way around. You guys are looking at the ZBA. My point is, is if, if in the last five years, let's say there's been, and I'm making up numbers here, fifteen, twenty cases of ADUs that have gone through or ten.
There are, no.
I believe there's probably been ten, but whatever. If, if ninety percent of them, whatever it is, are approved.
Yep.
Then the rule is.
And more precisely, if the, if the decision is being made based on state law, then yes, we should change it.
Yeah, and we did that a few years ago with.
And the state changed the law this year.
No, they didn't. It didn't pass. Didn't pass.
I have a question. How many times have you denied an ADU and the, um, property owner hasn't gone to the ZBA to get it, you know, get a variance for it? How often has that happened?
I can't think of a case.
Right.
Okay, so every time that you've denied an ADU, they've come before the zoning board for relief?
I'm not gonna say that, but I can't think of a case, yeah.
Okay, okay. Just wanted to get a feel for it.
And I can only think of three cases.
Yeah, so we, and this is part of why we have the zoning board here too and other departments is, is we, again, try to look at things. It's like, well, what are we doing and what's making sense? And we did that a number of years ago with, I think there was, there were a lot of one specific variance being requested for. And I think it was setbacks, probably. And we did reduce the setbacks for, for something and it freed up a lot of, a lot of items.
The other one was road frontage.
The road frontage we'd never addressed because it was the, uh, it was private road specifically and it was the RSA held this up and.
The other thing is that the town adopted so many roads, which took away a lot of our.
And that got rid of a lot of caseload too, so. Basically, every, every house that was on a private road, um, that wanted to build, had to get a variance for a, a building permit. So, so that eased up.
Taking it a step further, I have three or four very specific, and I don't know if that's the intent of this meeting.
Sure.
Do you wanna hear, like, things that I think are problematic that maybe we wanna change? Or is that not the intent of this meeting?
Yeah, go, go for it. Yep.
You wanna hear it?
Um, I have it very difficult and in fact, Teresa and I had a conversation a couple of weeks ago on the phone and I said, is this something I should even be sending to you? When we look at setbacks, our zoning ordinance is very specific about things about septic, structures and, but what happens when somebody wants to put literally a generator on the line? Like put it right with the line. They wanna put a patio on the line and have, you know, and on these camps, it's literally five feet away. I don't have anything in the zoning ordinance that tells me that I should be denying that. It says structures, septics, and that's it, you know? Um, I think there's one other thing in there. What I would like to add in the zoning ordinance is I would like to say, and it could be very generic, but anything man-made, minimum of ten feet away. You really wanna have a propane tank on your property line? Right now, it's very difficult for me to, I find ways of stopping it, but if I'm really challenged, there's nothing in there that says that. You could put a propane tank right on your property line. You could put a generator on your property line. You could put a swimming pool on your property line.
And the normal setback is what?
We changed setbacks on lots for sheds and stuff like this a couple of years ago because there were so many of them that were going in front of the zoning board. We thought it was, by what you're asking us to do right now is just gonna add to their caseload. You're almost setting us back. Cause if you think that the shed, the propane tank, you know, are we gonna put a limit? So we're gonna talk about, are we gonna put a limit that that, you think ten feet is gonna be the minimum?
And you know they're gonna come to us for it. You know they'll come before us for that.
I know, but it's like you and I talked about, cause I, I agree with you. I even asked Teresa, I said, should I be sending this to you? Is this something you even wanna hear? And her response was, yes, I don't think a propane tank should be right on, you know, that's what we talked about. I don't know. You tell me. Like, you're right. It is gonna make more ZBA cases. But at the same time, or do you want me to just approve all these?
ZBA cases individually. Okay, how did this get drawn? And the normal setback is twenty.
I think what's gonna happen, most of the time though, is that people put it where they want for convenience, but if it's not allowed there, there's places that you could put a propane tank on your property that would meet it. But they're gonna say, I don't wanna see it. I'm gonna put it in the back of my yard and make somebody else have to see it. You know, there are, I, I don't think it'll be as much as you think, but you are right. It would increase some.
What about fences?
I would not touch, fences, fences are allowed.
That's what I'm just saying, right? We say man-made structure, I'm just saying like if we.
Well, we actually have something in there about fences. Fences are actually, I always recommend people put them a foot off for maintenance in case you. They don't want you on your neighbor, they don't want you on your property, but fences are very specific. Even that, where that gets into a gray areas with us, the town, as far as the right of way for snow plowing, you know, you wanna put a fence right on the road and it's like, well, no, we're, we have so much space for this out right away from the center line.
Yeah. No, I think, I think this makes sense. We did that with, so last year with like roadways and driveways to give some kind of setback from those so they're not right on the property lines. Unless they're shared driveways to again, make it a little bit more neighborly, allow for snow and everything else. So I think that's something we can, we can take back.
And again, I would really like your input. If you wanna allow propane tanks and stuff on the property line, I don't care. I will enforce it. I mean, but I don't really think that that's fair to the neighbors, but if that's what you wanna allow, I'm fine with that. I'm literally looking for clarification from you.
Yeah.
What, what is the intent of the ordinance? Cause it doesn't say right now.
Isn't a propane tank connected to the plumbing system of the house and therefore part of the structure?
That's a stretch. No, you can't, that, that's a stretch. You could say the septic field is attached to the house then and, you know.
Twenty feet.
I, I would not.
It better be. Decepticons not attached, there's a problem.
What's that?
White tent and no one.
Just what he said. Imagine saying, I mean, there are proper places out there that you can't even get your house twenty feet away and it tells somebody they can't have a propane tank or whatever. We would be limiting some of these spots if they couldn't get it.
So we can.
So it's forgotten why it can be used with that.
Yes.
So I think having that discussion, cause we have that and I know we're not gonna talk about setbacks tonight too. So I think that's a.
So can, I don't think generators can, can't propane tanks go anywhere?
No.
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 You wanna take this one?
It's supposed to where the oil tanks go.
Underground, but.
Propane tank is supposed to be at least ten feet away from the, or twelve, that's another number.
Depends on the size of the tank.
Correct.
And you could put.
Away from the building.
Propane tank?
Yes.
You could put two fifties right up against the building.
If you have everyone out.
The truth, but not the big, not the fifty.
Not, not the five hundred, the thousand gallon one.
The little ones should be too.
No, that's not how the law works.
I know, I know.
So five hundred gallon tank, you have to have a certain distance, but two hundred fifty gallon tanks, you can have.
Put them right up against the building house. Which the funny part is you could put ten of them against your house and line them up if you wanted to.
Gonna ask, so when they're, yeah, in unison, okay. All right.
It's just something that, again, I don't care, but this is what we're seeing over and over and over again.
Yeah, no, that, that's a big piece of this, this meeting tonight is one of those things that we're seeing over and over and again.
Dale, how many ADUs are we seeing in this town? Each year, I mean, all are.
Ten to fifteen?
But we currently, even though we require one side to be owner occupied, we don't have a permit process. We don't have anything else for the town to even enforce that.
Even if they, we do at the beginning. I do verify, but the day later after they get a CO, they move out. Even if we know it, is the town really gonna get a lawyer to go chase, we're just not gonna do it. They get away with it. And a better question is, you're asking me how many ADUs do we have? I would say we have far more than that, but you didn't ask me how many legal ones to.
Right, right. That's why I tried, oh.
There are a lot of illegal ADUs in this town, in every town. And then, and they get away with it until they wanna sell the house and they get caught. And then they're like, oh, it's been this way for twenty years. Well, played by the rules twenty years ago.
Well, it's, it's a tough market, you know, it's like, how do, where do people go, you know? You get old, you have young kids living in your house because they can't afford one and, you know, this ADUs very, um.
So.
Needed.
So probably the other reason we're seeing stuff to ZBA with the setbacks, again, you know, it's a lot of like pre-existing lake, lake lots. So smaller, non-conforming lots. I believe other towns, I'm not advocating for this, I'm just trying to understand if this is the case. Especially if they're on dead end roads with only one egress, have blocked any conversion of those into year-round habitation. I think Northwood does that.
Northwood, when I was over there, I know Northwood has an issue with approving anything with only one egress. Because they have like a major development, there's like five hundred houses in there that, it's not even a development, but it's.
Pre-existing.
Yeah, it's pre-existing. It's just the infrastructure, but it all funds out through one road.
Right.
And, and they have major concerns over that.
Yeah, we see that here, not five hundred, I wouldn't think, but I know we have some that are, well, beyond the, the standard length of like a cul-de-sac that have no other way to get out and.
And we keep approving cul-de-sacs. So I don't understand that one way in and one way out. That's what a cul-de-sac is, correct?
But we limit the number of, the length of it and we limit the number of, uh, houses that could be there and we require that the utilities be underground.
But still, I don't, I just don't understand, cause I know we had talked about that a lot a few years ago when I was on here where we didn't want cul-de-sacs because it was a problem for fire and rescue if there was an issue going on. And now we've started approving them again. That's an egg.
Picture, it is an egg. Picture this whole development.
Mm-hmm.
They allow for cul-de-sacs within the development, but they want overall two egresses out.
But that's not what we're doing. We're doing the lollipops over and over and over again.
But I think that, yeah, the thought on that is for the rare emergency situation where fire police have to come in versus when you have a cut-through road that's designed to our standards of say twenty-four, twenty-six feet wide and straight site distances, again, uh, which help for fire apparatus specifically, you almost start creating some of your own emergencies in that. Now you have cut-through traffic, whereas a cul-de-sac's got the twenty houses that live on it and delivery vehicles so that, you know, they become almost more.
You're gonna find anybody from public safety that would say that. I mean, you have an active shooter at one end, you have a tree that comes down, whatever. They're always gonna want two ways out.
Yeah.
Uh, my next, my next item, cause I don't wanna take too much time, I'm actually gonna speak to what John's saying and go the other way.
About what it's, I respect some of this by the way, generators, may be structures and septic.
Thank you. Um, four, five years ago, when I first started, when I got there, the setbacks for a septic was fifty feet. And it was like, nobody could meet it. And I came in, I was new and I got it. And I asked for it to be reduced down to twenty because I didn't know what I could get or not. And I should've asked for it to go down to ten. That's what the state is right now where our setbacks, and we send a lot to, not a lot, but we send a fair amount to the ZBA for septic for twenty feet. And I would ask you to consider lowering that down to ten feet. It's what the state allows. It's, you know, it allows still, you get your seventy-five foot from well radiuses. It's, it's making some of the lots a little bit more buildable, but even, um, it's just adding a little bit more relief. And usually, and I agree with the ZBA, they're going to give a waiver on it almost every time anyways because there's no reason not to. You know, the hardship is you can't have a house because of this. It, it makes sense. I'd ask you to consider lowering the setbacks down to ten feet instead of twenty, even though I asked for twenty feet a few years ago, uh, cause I got it from fifty to twenty.
Yeah, and there was a lot of discussion then, cause it was twenty eighteen, I think it was twenty eighteen that it was increased and twenty twenty it was dropped back down, it was dropped down to twenty and, um, and I know there's discussion then about ten. And my thoughts on that is for the pre-existing non-conforming, I think it makes, it can make sense to, to reduce it down to ten. But for the, um, this is my opinion only, for the new subdivisions and, and everything else or the, the conforming lots, they, I would see twenty, twenty staying.
Complete sense.
The same. I think again, with like a lot of things, it just makes for better neighbors. If you're, uh, everything's a little further apart, then, then we're on top of each other.
Right, because a new subdivision, I mean, other than a little bit of open space areas, you have the room to do it. There's no reason not to. I agree with you a hundred percent.
But the pre-existing.
I think we should, I'd ask you to consider lowering it down to ten.
What does this, do you know off the top of your head, what the state requires for a minimum lot in size to allow a septic?
It depends on the soil type.
Yeah, so. Ideal soil.
Low, low is twenty thousand, um, and it goes up.
And you can even go.
And then you can go lower than that.
It's gotta go lower than that, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, if you have public water or something, you don't have to have a well. Right, so there's, there's a lot of variables, but it's soil based.
That makes sense.
Soil basics a lot.
Like the tenth, tenth of an acre.
Some towns still dictate, like New Jersey still dictates minimum lot size by soil type. Not, you know, you say two acres regardless of what your soils are. Those, you know, there, there's like a fluid.
Dale.
It's difficult to.
What constitutes the boundaries of something called septic?
The leach field or the tank, either one.
We also talking about the side, um, slopes, slopes.
I don't believe so. I believe we're talking about the perimeter where it actually perforates through.
Just so you know, it's in here.
Padline, your sway, your slopes are gonna somehow or another be somebody else's.
Plans that I, and you can speak more to this than me, the plans that I see, we, we're not talking about slopes at all. We're talking about the actual bed itself.
Yeah.
But you're talking about raise system in certain cases.
Well, in most cases, they're gonna be raised here in Nottingham. I mean, we have rock.
No.
It's the greatest thing.
All right.
So, you know, one of the things, and I, I have been hearing the rumblings of this, um, and I think it's something you all recognize, is that perhaps this needs to be tackled, hold this to be in like a lake area, whatever that district might be, but starting to look at a zoning district for that area to address all of these issues. It seems like everything should be working outside of that area. It seems where the exceptions always seem to come in.
The only thing that would be difficult with that is the overlay of the Aquifer District, which is a lot of that area. I don't know how that would play in, like, would you just zone everything in the Aquifer? Like, I don't know. That's, that would be an interesting one.
Yeah, it'd be like a pre-existing non-conforming overlay for, for the lake districts, which is.
Districts, yeah.
Pataque, North River Lake, any other areas that had those, uh, camp lots, so. Yeah, I think that's, that would be, we've kicked that around, like you said, but that's, that would be a major undertaking. So for now, we, we band-aid it and, uh, I think this is probably one of the biggest things that would potentially free it up. And I know even some of the, I don't know what the zoning case have been asking, if they were asking for less than ten.
Sometimes.
Yeah.
Sometimes they put them on the other person's lot.
Well, is it?
And is it just septics that we're talking about at ten or, because I know a lot of times it's, it's, you know, they wanna build out their deck, it's extending into that.
I'm not proposing that we change anything on.
So it's just the septics, okay.
Setbacks, but septic is on the ground and the state approves ten anyways. And again, history, the ZBA overturns it and it's rightfully so. There's no reason not to. So it's one of those things that if we're gonna overturn it anyways, why not change the rule and.
Well, yeah, right now we.
But that wouldn't apply to this though because if we, yes, you could say the septic is man-made, so it's to be ten feet, but we have something in the ordinance specific about septic that says twenty, so you have to go with that. You can't go with the law or you have to go with the original.
Yeah.
So those are two separate issues, just like the fence is man-made, but we have in our ordinance that the fence can go out on the property line. So that's void.
So how would you categorize, not septic, to ten feet? What's left?
Propane tanks, you know, treehouse, whatever.
Garage, barn, every other.
It's like everything else, right?
Yeah.
Just trying to be clear.
Yeah, cause that's a good point where if you, you say ten feet, but you're talking about man-made, man-made. I would go with man-made units if you're looking at septic, I mean, um, propane tanks and generators.
To define it.
We, we could figure out the, the, yeah.
Yeah, because there's a verbiage that needs to be.
You look at the lakes, I mean, you have houses that are three, four feet from the property line quite a bit. So what happens if somebody comes in and says, I wanna put a patio here and they're gonna put a stereo right under your window?
Yeah, yeah.
What's the intent? Am I supposed to approve it? Am I not, you know?
Right.
It's, whatever you guys want, I'm fine with, but I would, I think it needs to be clarified more.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, that's, that's good.
So that's all I have for changes, I do have one other item that I would ask the planning board or ZBA's help, I've been working on this for a year and I will admit that I'm failing miserably on it. Um, when I first got here, we had, I don't know who did it prior to me, but I think it was actually in the selectman's office. We had every road listed, what type of road it was, where it is, the maps, it was really, really well. And of course, everybody knows what happened two years ago and all of our roads changed and what is a town road now? Every day, somebody comes in and is like, what's a town road and then we're pulling out the, you know, the, in the yearbook of, I'm sorry, I'm head drawn blank, what's it called?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Town report.
The town, yeah, and trying to like see what was voted on three years ago and I'd really like to just. Find somebody and I've even tried to work, like Blas tried to help me, I've worked with 911, we need to update our maps. And it's gonna cost money and I don't know where that comes from, but we need to update our maps and what our road. Classes are, it's, should be fairly easy now because 90% of our roads are town roads now, but um, we need to spell all that out.
So I believe, um, so we do have an appendix within our regulations that we added in a number of years ago that needs updating, we know that. There's some mapping that's wrong and then also obviously we need to change the classification for some of these roads from private to uh, class five town. And that's, so that's on our list for this year, for that, that piece, would that become the master document? I don't know, but we also, for the maps, we had, I don't know if that was a grant.
This was not to do what you were doing, there was not clear understanding about what police wanted and what you wanted, because this is, this is just getting all road names. With the, all the little roads that have been added onto a map, so you guys can find it, that was.
Yeah.
But this doesn't, I don't think that this is saying. This is telling you what type of.
No, no, not for the map, two separate things, just a document that tells us what roads we have and whether they are in the map, those are two separate, we don't have to put what type of roads they are on there.
Okay.
Although.
I mean, that would be a good map to have.
It was all color-coded.
Yeah, I mean, it would be a good map to have, but. Yeah.
But I don't know if that's a company that does that, like.
Well, that might be.
I think it comes from, well, I think assessing was part of it, but, so our appendix, I don't know who actually pulled this all together. With the road name, it was appendix one Nottingham Roads, road name Nottingham Tax Map, 911 map, ownership, town, private. Town Class 6, so I don't know who actually ever pulled that together, I know some of it's wrong and we had to update it, we also had a scenic roads, which was appendix two. Again, gave the map, that's the ones that are wrong, those are 911 maps, not tax maps. This was done when we updated the subdivision and site plan regulations in 2015.
Selectman's Office created it when I was chairman.
There you go.
Was it a private company? No, if you're talking about the list, it was Janet Horvath who did that.
And then we have various maps hanging up around the hall.
That just needs to be augmented on, obviously, what type of road? What's the egress? That's what I wanted to revert back to there, is there another way in? You know, there's a bunch of extra fields that could be extended and is that then accessible to the police? That list, when they look up, they get a 911, they said this, you come in this way, you come in this way? You know, because, or the fire, because there's a fire, you come in this way, this way, or, or, you know. Or you can come right straight in, there's only one way in, one way out, is that all information accessible?
Well, so I can reach out to SRPC, because SRPC printed all these other maps for us that are in the hall. So we do have roads within the designations uh, in a number of other maps, so those maps specifically, I could reach out to SRPC and see. How we go about updating those and get maybe an estimate and then that either.
The ironic part is 911 has elaborate ones, but they will not give them out for, they have, for legal reasons, they won't give them out.
So.
Can't get them.
Shell protection.
So we have uh, so we have options, so again, we might go into budget season.
That's.
Oh, that's wonderful, so.
We have them, but they are outdated.
I'll, I'll make.
Well, yeah, I mean, the outdated.
That's, that's part of what this is, you know, there was a. May, so this, tonight, I'm gonna just tell people that this map exists, right, and this is a draft, this is based on Lindsay and I working together. From.
The police department.
The police department.
For hours.
Yes, she spent a lot of time, she actually did a really good job on it. And our GIS guy took the information that she provided, because 911 wouldn't, and put it on here. And so this map is gonna go to you guys first and then maybe share it with you and start drawing on it and tell me what you wanna see. Cuz I can, cuz this was started when you guys were members and we were able to do this.
Okay.
I don't think Jen's gonna complain if I see this through. Um, but I wanted to get to where you want to be and I did just look at the. The legend and it does list divided highway limited access, Turnpike Toll Road, US Route, New Hampshire Route, state roads, local roads.
That's all I'm looking for.
So. And make sure the road names are where they're supposed to be and that they're on the roads and then the type of road. And if you guys mark this up and give it back to me, I can almost 90% guarantee I can get it finished.
And then later on, it's adding that as a GIS layer for the town to be able to add it as an overlay and, you know, and then add other factors, so like cisterns, for example, we have a cistern map.
That would be great.
Culverts, culvert locations.
Probably several private roads that you don't even know about, like, that we just change.
Well, that's what I think Lindsay went through, I, I mean, she was giving me little like doodle sketches and stuff, like she, I think she got everything, I'd be shocked if she didn't. What's that?
I said she's amazing.
Yeah, so, look, that's why it's here tonight, I had one printed off as a draft for the, to be passed around, to be edited. And just so you see what it looks like in full scale and then I will follow through.
Awesome, thank you.
That was item agenda B1.
That's all I have, do you guys have any questions for me?
No.
How many new houses are going in right now? That's a difficult question to answer and I would say, you mean, right now or this year?
How many building permits have been pulled for new construction?
Yeah, like throughout the year that are active right now, we're probably gonna put in about 60 houses this year, but it's still confusing though, because. I have houses that have permits from three, four years ago, there's a lot that are houses, so if I say 60. You know, some of those I counted last year and the year before.
Right.
You know, but. There, there would be the potential and then if we look at all the subdivisions, you guys know better than I do, you know, what's coming and stuff like that, between the three or four major subdivisions that we have.
Not 40 or 50.
What subdivisions are they building in now, I mean, I know the condos are going up there on the.
We've got, or not coming, but we have the potential for the Fort Hill one, we have the Mitchell Road one, possibly one on Stevens Hill Road coming. We just did a one on Stevens Hill, that was only like seven, but uh, there's gonna be another one on Stevens Hill, I believe. So those, and then there's also the Shea one, which is what, that's just like three or four or something, but, I mean, you're, you're looking at. I don't know, 40 or 50 right there, just if they all get approved.
Protect my ridge, it's about 50 so far.
You know.
And that's the other thing, going back to the list, that's important stuff, it is, a lot of these cases, you know, it could be six months or more where they go through the approval process here and. You know, board can change over and that continuity of having some kind of list of.
The other thing that's misleading about that number that I gave you is there might be, and I'm making up numbers here, 10, 15 of them, there were demos, there were houses there already that are just being replaced.
Jack, so, so I guess what I was kinda thinking about was what um. You know, we're approving these subdivisions, maybe something two, three years ago and they're building on them now or, you know, finally you're, you know, closing up, it takes, you know, months to build a house. Are you seeing any issues with the subdivisions that are approved as far as. Being workable for a house, I mean, like the open space developments, is there?
So, I've been here for five years and all the subdivisions that we've done are relatively small, we've not done a major subdivision since I've been here.
Yes.
Um. I mean, I, I came in at the end of Maple Ridge, but that was already all approved. Um, we haven't had a, a major subdivision in years, but we've had several little ones.
Yeah.
Yeah, by major, I think you're referring to things with new roads where we've had major subdivisions being four or more lots, but not with a new road, so yeah.
I guess, you're right, by definition, I'm talking 20 houses, you know, 15, 20 houses, something like that.
Yeah.
Now we have three.
Which I think we're gonna see.
I was gonna say, don't we have, the Smoke Street and Pataque Way Ridge, right?
Smoke, Pataque Way Ridge, Moore's Road. Uh, and then.
And possible Stevens Hill.
And then the other one on uh.
Talk about that one too.
Mitchell.
Yeah.
That was approved a few years ago, but again, these are coming in now.
It, it takes about four to six months for a contractor to build a house, there's a lot on there, like homeowners that have been taking years. And I, I usually have about 20 to 30 open permits at one time.
Yeah.
And it just cycles through, you know, one comes down, one goes up, but there's always 20 or 30 houses being built. Again, some of those have been there.
Fitting the house in these subdivision lots or whatever, I mean, where the houses, where they have to, they put the driveway, they can't fit the driveway and they can't fit the septic, can't fit the house.
Have all looked at with us?
We have.
That's all looked at with us.
No, but for like the newer subdivisions, I haven't heard that coming in as a problem, because everything's engineered out and surveyed to such a degree.
Goes through, I haven't seen any issues as far as once the planning board, like, those are the easy ones to deal with, because you guys have dealt with all those problems already.
Right.
That's, that's not. An issue, but the issue is just going back to what we did before is.
Things or if there's anything we're missing that we should be, you know, thinking about on that.
I think the only thing that we keep running into is timelines, so conditional approval is technically 12 months. Applicants. We have something out to legal now on 1, but, you know, what do we do if they miss that deadline? If we didn't specify 12 months, our sub regs specify 12 months, we didn't give them a different deadline, it's 12 months, same thing with final approval, we've signed off on it. Active and substantial development, we defined it, you know, they have to expend 25% within the first year or within two years and then, you know, 50% and then they have four years to build. Or their permit, they can get revoked, but when does that ever happen, you know, so.
I guess I would finish this the same way I started this, the whole thing, we're all doing our job, we're all doing it very well and everything is done, it comes down to communications.
Right.
Are we communicating with each other, are we communicating with the applicant, are we communicating with outside agencies, it's, it's about communication. Everybody's doing what they're supposed to do, are we following up on it?
Alright, thank you.
And I'll put a lot of that on me, you know, not other departments.
Dale, there is a list of roads, I'm assuming you have it dated 9/22 from the Highway Department. That included all the. Uh, private roads that became town roads.
I have not seen that.
Okay, it's on the website. I just looked it up. Cuz I thought I saw something about it.
But even with like, I know I've added.
Yep, no.
Three or four, like, I should get that information to them then if they're gonna be doing that too or.
I'm not gonna say that they did it, I'm just saying that there is one that exists, it sounds like it's more frequent, more um. Later than the one you may have.
Okay, perfect.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you Dale, appreciate it. And I should say this at the beginning of the meeting, my goal for tonight, for, for everybody in the room that's present, I, I, this is great conversation and I wanna, I don't wanna stop any kind of conversation. My goal is definitely hard stop at 10, if not a little bit before for everyone. You know, I wanna get traction on a, you know, identify a number of items that we can get traction on. And move forward with this year and then it'll be other items that we address and we make a longer-term plan for, but um. Getting this input tonight is, from all of you is, is, is great and I really appreciate it and uh, it'll help us guide which items we, we prioritize this year, so thank you for, thank you for that. We, we run into, if it's amendments and warrant articles, you always run into that, if you make too many, you know, too many changes at once. Sometimes there's maybe a perception that, that we're overreaching, even if we're making things less strict and we're taking away regulation. It could get perceived a different way and, and things can go down, so we try to identify two to three potentially and um, maybe more, but uh, I move from there. So, do we have any other um, department heads here? I'm not familiar with, I know we have CONCOM represented, there's some other individuals, I don't know if you're maybe budget, uh, RCIP recognizing some, but if. We'll go ahead and before we get into our piece of it tonight, since there is public here, I'd like to just invite the CONCOM up first. If they're, if they wanna step up now to talk about anything, otherwise we'll um, have some public input and then we'll get into like the list that we had for the agenda. So I see Ms. Mooney. Mr. Merritt. If you can just go ahead and identify yourselves for the uh, me please.
Susan Mooney, Secretary of Conservation Commission. Dallas Huggins, Member Conservation Union Commission.
Sam DeMerritt, Chair of the Conservation Commission.
And I saw a really nice write-up and acknowledgement of Mr. DeMerritt's dedication to the state. Uh, what was it, 350, how many years where, where was your uh, that, that came from the, our state senator for your volunteer service?
Oh, that little time, you know, the Hunter, Hunter Education Course, I've been teaching for 60 years.
60 years, so thank you, thank you for that, it's uh, your, your.
That was.
As we see our volunteers in town, the volunteers in town that volunteer for one thing oftentimes volunteer for many things and it's uh. Everybody that volunteers, you know, that's greatly appreciated, so thank you, but we welcome you for uh, for your input on any, either agenda items that we have tonight or anything you, you'd like us to consider or think about.
I think that um, our biggest priority is wildlife protection and steep slopes. And to direct the board's attention to the master plan that was developed in 2011, 2012. In the Natural Resources Chapter, NR 5.3, was a recommendation, an action plan to amend the zoning ordinance. Such as the addition of scenic steep slope protection district to provide for greater protection of scenic quality from the impact of development. But also provide protection for wildlife habitat and special plant communities.
What section was that, sir?
On NR 5.3. It's on section Natural Resources. It's on page 2-12 and it's item 5.3. And I know that planning board has been kicking around reviewing and updating the scenic slopes, I'm sorry, the steep slope ordinance for a number of years.
Yeah, and I think when we updated the subdivision regs, they, there was some additional language added in. You know, but it's never really been. Been uh, been adopted, so that was something I was, Mr. Heaney to kinda look into is what other, what other communities around us are doing and looked at some model language, I think it was Stratford and Farmington and um, a couple of other towns. As to how they define it, what do they actually do, because the model ordinance that we had drafted for us in the past. It didn't seem like it actually added any, any teeth, it was just kinda like, you know, should, should do these, should, so it's kind of more of a best practice. So, that was one item I, we had on the agenda for tonight to talk about as a board is, is, do we wanna look at steep slopes again and if so. What do we wanna do with them, you know, how do we define it, can we make it short and sweet or is it really something that needs to be longer where some towns that, you know, mentioned it, it's just, you're not supposed to be building on top of the ridge, so. Again, it's that viewscape part of it for everybody else. And things like that, so. You know, and what, what slope do you, do you start regulating at 15% and do some kinda like restrictions for 15 to 25 and then, or just go straight to 25 and, and over? And do you prevent all like development on that? Or is there, you know, some, some guidance and I think that's where we haven't, as a board, discussed yet or uh, come up with what we would wanna see, so.
We have a. We have a steep slope ordinance for people's driveways for the fact that we put in so that fire trucks can get up, can't get down for safety purposes.
Yeah, we have, we have a slopes for roadways and for driveways, yep.
Now, you wanna, this, the town, what they're asking for is just so if it's a good-sized hill that you can't build on it?
So a lot of communities.
Let's be little.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
What we're actually speaking about right now, instead of being self clarification on this, if it's a certain that you own a piece of land. And it's 15 degrees, you, we're not gonna be able to build on it, how are we gonna restrict towards that or if they can make a road up it on the other side that's not so steep? Is that property still considered a steep slope if only one side's steep?
It's, so it's usually, it's usually controlling the. It's a, so it's usually, it's usually controlling the disturbance in areas that are, most communities do it at twenty-five percent or greater. So it's, those areas, those slopes that are twenty-five percent or greater are highly sensitive to erosion and a number of other things, never mind what can it become of a, a viewscape, never, and then when, like we just saw this on Pataquey Ridge, for example, the cuts and fills that have to occur and then the amount of grading outside of an area. So you have some areas that were thirty feet deep of a cut and then another area that might be thirty feet of fill. But your total disturbance can be over a hundred feet wide because you're gonna have to slope out to get that to a twelve percent grade. The amount that you have to actually disturb and bring in fill or, or uh, everything is pretty extensive, so, and then those areas tend to have potentially future problems with, with uh, erosion and runoff if not done appropriately. So again, the state allows us, you know, we control already certain critical areas, um, you know, wetlands, streams and certain erodible soils. Ledge, we already consider these areas non-buildable, but we don't actually prevent building um, or roadways specifically from being developed through a, a steep slope area.
Mr. Jeff, I can just add to that, with the development down on one fifty-six, all the applicant has to do is apply to the state for an alteration of terrain. And in this case, they were able to take the top of the hill off thirty feet and then use that fill to fill in another area that was deeper down to the bottom. But if we had regs in town that made this type of action on, it would be more difficult. They will protect from erosion, protect.
So again, and, and in the way this was drafted in the past, or it's, there was some language in there, it was specifically for new subdivisions was gonna be the zoning to it. It wasn't there to try to prevent anybody with um, you know, the current house from, from doing things. It was, again, tried to be geared towards development and uh, and kinda putting some gloves on or a few more controls in place for the, for that to uh, to address, you know, probably a lot of the areas that you'll start, we are seeing development occur. It's gonna be more of the um, the marginal areas that were previously non-developed because of costs and now are, are being developed cause, cause the margins work.
I might add if I can, um, if you have a walkout basement on um, you know, eight foot difference on your foundation, um, and your house is thirty feet wide or thirty-two feet wide, that's a twenty-five percent grade. So if I wanna walkout basement, I can have that at twenty-five percent on my house? It's not buildable, it's not usable, what, how do you define and categorize and capture that one individual spot on an individual lot that says, well, that spot there in the middle is twenty-five percent? But if you're gonna fill it, then it's not gonna be twenty-five percent anymore or you're gonna put your house with a walkout. How, how do you, how do you categorize that and are we creating more limits to housing in this time of housing prices where there's not enough housing and cost to build are exorbitant and um, do we need more restrictions or less?
So the way it was originally drafted too, it had another parameter in there of like, uh, to make sure this wasn't just like, okay, there happened to be a little mound there that was non-archaeological, just, just a mound that was, you know, three hundred feet and square, three hundred square feet, so it's not to prevent that. There was, there, there was a language in it to make it areas that were two thousand square feet and greater, so contiguous, um, so it wasn't that there just happened to be a little roll and that was slightly over twenty-five percent. It was that, you know, these areas over two thousand square feet contiguous area that are twenty-five percent sloped, uh, existing to pr- provide protection to those.
Would you restrict this onto larger lots or would you say like, for instance, if you're driving on, I wanna use these lots just in general because it's white, everybody can see it. You're going down one fifty-six and you're between Far Dairy Lane, the old swamp, which used to be a beaver swamp, but it's gone. And then there's a couple of new houses and then you hit the farm. All those lots are pretty high up. Now there's five or four or five lots there, they're not gonna be subject to building or doing anything on those steep slopes.
No, this, this.
That's a pretty distinct lot.
Right, so the goal, the way this had been originally drafted.
They're just gonna worry about the drive.
It was for new, new development, new subdivisions. Again, and that can be changed, I'm not saying that's how it has to be, that's how originally it was kinda drafted, but it didn't, I think it didn't add actual, you know, actual like, shall not. So again, if this is, if we do amend this or adopt this in whatever language to be created, if it's placed in the zoning ordinance, you can then either add a conditional use permit process to allow, to go through, stay within the planning board or it would become a variance. Or maybe there's a special exception, there's two, two other options to make it slightly easier than a variance. But if neither of those are placed then, and, and a protection was put in for steep slopes, then it would become a variance process for relief and again.
We have a question too, what about the lot that's off, I'm just picking this out since this came up. You got the lot that's on um, Deerfield Parade Road that's been for sale. If you're going down the road, it's gonna be on your right hand side, sold yet or misconditioned or whatever, uh, I know there's a lot of lengthy stuff there, but is that hill, cause it's so steep? Would that be, again, this is where the specifics come in, there's a lot of land sitting there, but because of that hill, is that long, no longer built?
If it's.
Is, if, if something like this type of ordinance would go through?
It would.
What about the other side of the, the road?
If it's over twenty-five percent and this were passed by the board and then the, the town, um, it would require a variance if, for, for new subdivision. Again.
It has to be fit for building, road building.
Including, including road, cause right now roads can go in, are not stripped out of that, so when we're seeing roads go through or as Ms. Mooney pointed out, top of a hill or mountain, I don't know what the classification of that one was, removed.
A summit.
Um, a summit being removed entirely.
Well, that was that one and the one on Smoke Street.
And Smoke Street, same thing, again, these are conditionally approved cases, I don't thi, I think it's fine to talk about them. Same thing, you're taking a huge cut from one side, filling in these really severe slopes on the other side to make, to make lots, so. But we don't have anything right now that really precludes them from doing that.
Driveways in the slope, right? Right?
A max slope, yeah.
And so, I'm confused as to what you, what we're talking about, I guess. We presently have requirements for slopes for the various things that you're talking about, but are you talking just an undisturbed lot that has to prove right now twenty-five, uh, that it, that the, that the areas of, that the area that is fit for building has slopes of less than twenty-five percent?
Without altering, without train alteration, right?
Correct.
Right. But, so you can have a steep thing that comes from the road if you fill it, but you do have land that's fit for building that is less than twenty-five.
So all of this can be done hashed out in discussion in the later time.
Oh yeah, no, 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 I'm just.
Why this debate and all the conversation?
No, that's fine, I'm just trying to figure out, um, is, is this trying to make lots that have slopes of greater than twenty-five unbuildable?
If you have a buildable area, an envelope, that should be fine.
Okay.
But I think that egress and access to the, to the lot has to be considered.
Okay.
That's, that's the, that's the catching point right now, cause right now the buildable envelope, the, what, the way we define it, is that buildable envelope cannot contain areas unfit for building, which it means slopes greater than twenty-five percent, ledge, uh, and um, you know, wetlands. But the, the fine print of that is that it allows, we don't protect it for the roadways to get cut in. So two of the most recent subdivisions, major subdivisions have gone through, the entire road went through steep slopes. So you're getting very large disturbances and cuts and fills and, and grading to allow, you know, access to what becomes the buildable area. So you, you basically would have non-buildable area, you know, cause it would be, it would be similar with like wetlands.
So that's a requirement that we presently have. And it doesn't sound like that what you're proposing would stop it, or are you just saying we need to talk about that capability?
Make it a little tighter.
Okay.
And address these issues.
Well, actu- actually, aren't you looking at making those areas undisturbed though? Because.
Correct, correct.
Well, basically.
Possible.
Okay, cause that, that was my consideration on.
Unbuildable including a driveway. What combination does?
Cause it's all, it's only from alteration of terrain that these were able to go through at all, which was my big thing during the discussions. It's like, I, I just don't understand.
But right now we just don't have, like, we have a lot of language within the sub regs, you know, it says like, you know, generally should and should avoid these areas or whatever, but there's nothing that actually has any, I think what you put, should. You know, shall is different, but even then, you know, waiver and uh.
A waiver though.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so.
See you again.
Well, no, it would be, to me, it would be through the planning board that does the waivers, but I don't see those being denied very often, just saying.
But, but also connected to this, when you can do an alteration of terrain and then you need to provide for wildlife to be able to go through culverts, developers aren't interested in putting in the high fancy blue culverts that are quitter friendly, they just wanna do.
They'll sit right here and tell us they will though.
Well, they.
They'll tell us that they have an amphibian friendly culvert that's sixty-something feet long and eighteen inches.
We've had that.
Diameter.
That is exactly.
And yes, Dale's nod, yep, yep, they sit right there and say, yep.
And they might, but why do they have to do it?
Yep, yep, we can take care of that, yep, we can.
Yes, as far as the, just in relation to the culverts, um, I think that um, I, I know we had mentioned previously uh, in discussions like about the um, Blandings Turtle crossing guidelines, the wetlands um, crossings, the guidance document that New Hampshire Fishing Game developed this year. Um, and um, and so we were in, I, I think it was in discussion of just like using that guidance because they just came out with this. Um, sorry, took it back a little bit, um, the, the guidance document is for how to make a safe culvert crossing for um, they specifically focused on Blandings Turtles cause they are an endangered species and, and they're um, but turtles in general are an umbrella species for all wildlife, so it's, it's really important for all wildlife and these crossings are um, guided or um, meant for all wildlife for safe passage. So anyway, I was um, because we have such valuable habitat throughout New Nottingham, um, I just think when we have wetland impacts that we know of, that it would be really important to um, consult that document because it has lots of really great language and, and um, advise, or suggestions on like what, how to make it appropriate where we don't just like cut that passage off and then wildlife can no longer cross there and, and you know, it's no longer a traffic partner, so. I wanted to propose that that be something to, to um, consider is to um, to consider that document specifically whenever there is like wetland impacts happening.
We just send them to you guys.
Yeah.
And I, and I believe this is the, uh, I believe Mr. Stevens had brought this to our attention um, during a prior plan or, or after.
This one here?
So I, I kinda tasked him with uh, potentially seeing where we could, how we best could add that into, that would go into our subdivision regulations, which again, that's a little bit easier cause it's controlled by the board, um, through public hearings, but where we could potentially add that in and, and adopt it, you know, so it's, do we just reference the document uh, and as amended? Or do we actually pull specific pieces out and put that in the regulation, uh, the ordinance, um, it is regulations, sorry, subdivision regulations, insight plan regulations? So that was something, cause it's obviously, it's kind of a lengthy document, so we wouldn't wanna drop that whole thing in, but, and obviously it's not for every, every road crossing, crossing, it's, it's within it, it gives specifics as to where these would be applicable. So it's not every development, um, you know, again, it's just a best practice for both applicants and new developments as well as, you know, the town potentially to, to adopt as well, it's per standard. So as we look to report place culverts. I don't know, where you, you found a good way to kinda summarize that or where we might be able to put that?
Still working on that, yeah.
So that, that's potentially as we look to amend those reg, those two documents this year, um, that that might get added in somehow or referenced at least.
That'd be amazing, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you all. I see a few other individuals in the room, I don't know if you're just here for the uh, meeting or if you had, had comment, you wanted to apply before we get into, again, our items, we're touching upon a few of them now. But you're welcome to come up, anybody? Do you have anything? You're, okay, I think, no. There'd be more time, so um, we'll get into the, to the board side of it again, but as we do this, we'll take feedback from everybody if, if anybody has any additional. So, straight on our agenda items, we talked about steep slopes a little bit, so I think the board, we can either discuss that a little bit more now or get into that a little further in a workshop later on. Anybody want, think we need to talk about that tonight, more tonight? No, I think there's.
Based on the time, I don't think we'll have, we have much time to devote to.
Yeah.
Discussing a lot of these, but I think we do need to set a firm date.
Yep.
Where it's not gonna get done.
Yep. So I'll uh, make sure by the end of the night we, we get that done.
Okay.
ADUs, so any, any uh, desire to talk, to discuss, um, looking to potentially amend and allow for detached ADUs this year?
I, I think we should, just allow for them, just like the ten foot thing for the, for the septic. Since the, he said the state allows it, the state allows the detached ADUs, I think that needs to be consideration.
Does anybody see an increase in septic design or a new septic design associated with ADUs and the multiple ADUs that you can have? I didn't see that anywhere in the, in the.
What do you?
Documentation.
What's the question?
What? So when you go to add it.
I think I knew, septic systems were designed on the number of bedrooms for the house.
Yeah, so you have to add a minimum, if you were to add an ADU, you have to add the equivalent of a two bedroom septic. Either add on to the existing or build a separate one. Right, so even if your ADU is only one bedroom, it has to be the equivalent of a two bedroom. And that is required, so.
Or each ADU.
Yes.
It's gonna go through, it's gonna go through that.
I think it's more that I have an ADU in one of my properties and um. Yes, mostly. You've worked of your belongings, I align there, ADU that's sent.
Yeah.
They don't have a residency department?
I needed to do a septic design to show that a septic that would have the capacity to match that existing house and the ADU, which is a higher density than whatever it's, you know, cause it's a kitchen and a bath and laundry and, you know, and have a household, so it's like a higher percentage than just adding an extra bedroom. So I had to hire somebody to do a test fit and do a septic design. I haven't built it, but I had to prove that it had, the land had the capacity to withstand that.
Did you see that, the state regs, I didn't see it.
Says you need to prove that you have life safety requirements, water and sewer.
I'm looking at it.
It doesn't matter whether it's an AD, ADU or not, you can put just an addition on to the house, so you're looking for something specific. I'd look at the number of bedrooms and in this case, what they're talking about is the percentage more, it's not quite two bedrooms, I think it's, you know, it's a fraction, whatever they figure out to be. But specifically for an ADU, there's not like a rule for that, it's the amount of what is the load and it has to. So if you wanna add an ADU, you could get rid of a bedroom in your house, well, awesome, you know, and it can equal all type thing. Uh, bad example for the ADU, but let's say you were putting an addition on, you get rid of one bedroom, add one, it's the amount of bedrooms that you have. There's not a specific rule for it, so if you had a three bedroom house and you wanna put an ADU on, you're gonna be looking at like a four point seven, you might as well just say a five point bedroom, you know, and then everything he just said.
Yeah, now I didn't mind it before with our attached ADUs because that kinda indicated that small amount, but now that you can have multiple ADUs on the property, all of a sudden, I shouldn't say can have.
You can have one ADU.
This, but the state regs that we're trying to go through included multiple ADUs. And, and to me, it seemed like it was missing the whole septic issue.
Well, it's bypassing multifamily, you know, go back to the two acres per unit.
Yeah, but that's with our regs, something, you know, once the state regs go in and, you know, then people hear about them and all that kinda stuff. The detached ones also seem to indicate that it get hooked into what's. The detached ones also seem to indicate that it get hooked into what's presently there, and it doesn't seem like that's the case for a lot of these. I'm just guessing.
When, when you see an ADU application come in and you go to do an inspection, are you looking at the septic design or a new septic, or what are you looking for?
I'm looking that they have a state-approved septic for what they want to put in, whether it's detached, attached, whether it's a whole separate septic unit.
For the number of bedrooms.
Or it's just a addition, and again, like you said, they don't have to put it in, they just have to have a plan for the event of failure that it can go into the future. So all I'm looking for is for the state to approve that what they want will match, you know, what they have.
And we do have that in the zoning ordinance currently. It's, the replacement of proposed septic system must be designed and certified by a licensed septic designer as adequate to support the accessory dwelling unit in accordance with the New Hampshire RSA, blah, blah. So we have that now, so if we...
Okay.
If we go to amend this from being, uh, attached, so there would be some language cleanup there, you know, if we're still requiring a maximum of shall not exceed seven hundred and fifty square feet. And it, we do currently say that when one's supposed to be owner-occupied property, a lot of towns do have a permit, an annual permit process in place. I think Dover was a town I had seen that had it listed. Um, not saying that we want to do that, but again, if there's annual permit process, it, it allows the town to take action should they decide. But then, but then do we, do we, but you get into the point where right now we allow accessory structures twenty feet from a property line, which would include a garage, but now you're going to have something that's, that's, you know, resided in. So does that, then, do we need to then change the language of setbacks that if it's an owner-occupied structure, it would then push back into the, um, the fifty-foot?
Well, we should add detached also, right?
It's attached right now, we, we have it, it's attached right now.
Attached, detached.
We'd have to, we'd have to change to detached. Oh, right.
Ask you to consider if you do change it for any new ADU, if you are building a new structure, that you do not wait for the seven fifty because basically they're going to come in with multifamilies and then build all these houses and say, oh, look at my cute little ADU, it's, you know, three thousand square feet.
Hmm, that's not an ADU.
I know that, but we need to have it clarified that if you were built, if you were going to allow detached ADUs, it should be shall seven hundred and fifty square feet. Now, I would ask you also to consider, like, let's say somebody has a garage already and they just want to build over it, you know, and it's already eight hundred, nine hundred feet. That's different, that it's common sense that, you know, if you're going to allow them to have it, you're not going to make them cut off a hundred feet or something like that. But for new structures, we should limit it to seven fifty, or they're just going to take advantage of us.
Well, it already says, I mean, even in the state regulation, that the ADUs comply with the requirements of municipal ordinances, so it's like, even this doesn't allow for a three thousand square foot ADU. It's just a detached.
Yeah, it used to be, so the state had changed it, went, so, it, it, to require that towns had, they came in ADUs, my understanding was originally the state said towns may allow them, then towns have to allow them, but it can, can regulate, you know, common door, attached, that kind of stuff. Then it was the square footage increase, because I think originally a lot of towns made them three hundred and fifty square feet or four hundred square feet or something really small. The, my understanding of why it's the seven hundred and fifty square feet is, A, to potentially avoid true multifamilies, but it's also, that limits the number of bedrooms, so you're not getting, you know, the potential increased burden on school where, you know, now these are truly multifamilies and they're, they're three-bedroom units with, you know, with children and everything else. So then you have a home and that, and you didn't account for it. But that's just some of my understanding of background, really quickly, on, on ADUs.
So are we mostly looking at the difference of adding in detached? And then what the question might, one question might be, um, I have a garage that is ten feet, an existing garage, ten feet from the property line where there's fifty or twenty feet or whatever it is in the district. Um, I have a garage in this setback existing and I, you know, if it has an upstairs, I could finish that as an ADU. If it doesn't have an upstairs, I, I can't build a second floor over that existing garage footprint, um, or I can't build that garage at all with an ADU if it's non-existing, which there's kind of like several different little scenarios there.
I think the, the, the regs are saying that you would follow whatever a single-family setback is. And right now, a single-family setback is fifty feet. So just because you have your garage there and you're going to finish off the upstairs and the garage is within twenty feet, which is what's allowed here, but that dwelling unit does not meet the single-family reg, which is fifty feet. So no, you wouldn't be able to do that. That would be my interpretation. You could clarify that in the reg to make it very clear so someone, only a person looking at it could see very specifically, but...
So right now, somebody could build a garage, then a little bit later, do an accessory dwelling unit above that garage to get around the fifty-foot setback.
No, no, what I'm saying...
Not right now.
Because right now, a garage is an accessory structure. This is an accessory dwelling.
Okay.
And dwelling is the same as a single-family house, right? So if you put a dwelling above your accessory structure, it's no longer an accessory structure, it's an accessory dwelling. Just because it has a garage...
Right.
Or a shed or storage, you know, it doesn't change what it is. It's, it's a use classification. The use classification went from accessory structure to accessory dwelling. So if your dwelling setback is fifty feet, this accessory dwelling has to meet that same standard. That's what the state regs are saying.
I think adding that, we have a nice little chart with the setbacks, I think putting ADUs in there, if this were to move forward, putting, showing it there clearly to make it, so, like you said, it gets rid of the ambiguity, the question, the argument, um, it would make it clear for everybody moving forward.
I, I thank, thank you for, that, that's great. I wish you were at the zoning meetings and you throw that one out. Um, all right, so then, then we have, um, the lake with the existing lots with the smaller than whatever they are, has a twenty-foot setback, reduced setback. Is that same, same scenario?
I can't see them any of them fitting in an ADU.
I know.
The lake lots.
Just go up. You're talking about garage, garage, garage.
The individual scenarios aside, if you're saying that a residential dwelling could be within twenty feet, then in theory, your accessory dwelling could be within twenty feet.
Okay.
And then it goes back to the septic side of it, where can they get the, you know, can they meet the septic?
There's all, there's all kinds of variables that, whether it's physically possible, but from a regulatory standpoint.
I, I think having a detached versus attached is the same, same game, same thing.
And one other thing that I have seen people, uh, limit, because seven hundred and fifty square feet is viewed by a lot of people as very small.
Yeah.
I live in five hundred square feet, I'm perfectly happy because I live down in the city, so I have no problems with it. Seven hundred and fifty would feel like, you know, a mansion to me. But for people that may be downsizing, it may feel small. Limiting the number of bedrooms, I have seen that, and I don't think I've seen that be challenged, so...
I thought the RSA precluded you from limiting the number of bedrooms, but I could be wrong.
I'll take another look, but I am pretty sure I've seen it before to two bedrooms, which is a fairly standard one. So if this, if the square footage is being limited to limit bedrooms, you might have another option, so you can allow for a little bit bigger, but without having the bedroom overload that you're worried about. But let me, before I...
But then you could get the three thousand square foot scenario where they, they, uh, yeah, it's only two bedrooms.
Well, the other, the other, well, yeah, everybody gains, everybody gains a septic system by calling something an office or calling something, you know, so that's not going to change because of ADUs, that's not going to somebody come into play.
Being a lot of more...
Because it's not multifamily, you have to have somebody living there. It's not multifamily, you know, and just, that distinction has to be clear. This is not a multifamily development because you can't, because you can say you can't condoize it. That can be a regulation in it that you can never kind of, you can allow it if you want to down the road, but you, you can have it in your regs and it can't be condoized.
You, you might have eight kids and they have a three-bedroom house and they're piled in. I mean, it's, what's the difference there?
So I'm hearing, I think I'm hearing that we want to have further discussion on this. There's some options to consider, some options to consider. That's a good one, that, you know, something I didn't consider about the not, not being able to condoize it. Do we discuss requiring additional acreage or lot size, which is allowed? We don't currently, we specifically state that it doesn't require any extra.
You could only do it for detached.
Detached.
Correct.
Right.
We don't allow detached, so.
Right, so right now, it says, it shall not.
It's a moot point, yeah.
So those are some of the talking items and, um, uh, I'll probably work with Blair to see if we can come up with some, uh, some of those items to discuss and potentially look at.
Maybe we can grab, I always like, why reinvent the wheel? Maybe we could look at a couple of the towns that have detached and see if they've added some language or whatever.
Yep.
And, um, I'll, uh...
Yeah, we always do that as much as possible to, uh...
Steal.
Someone else spent the money on it, why, uh, why do it ourselves? Okay. So two possibilities, add/move definitions, this is another one we want to talk about, fit for building versus lot envelope versus unfit for building. Blair, did you have specific, I know you printed out...
Yeah, so all this is, is taking...
Our definitions.
The three definitions and putting them on this page, and then all the locations in the ordinance where these, these words exist. So you guys don't have to go through the sixty-plus-page document to find it. This is just, this is just a reference tool. It is no analysis, there's no suggestions or recommendations, just sort of language is in front of you.
Uh, what, what pages do you have there, Blair, or do you know?
Sorry?
Oh.
It's in your handout, it's your handout.
Yeah, you didn't, you didn't get it.
You were late.
So I think...
Oh, did you not get it? Oh, you got it, you got it.
I think we, I think we added these, some of these definitions during our last update to, because we had, again, if we don't, if we don't define things, it goes to common definition. So I think we added these definitions in, but I think there's, you're, you're, you're indicating, like, this potential to, like, clean it up and kind of get, get rid of some redundancy.
Well, I mean, first off, we did have an experience at the last meeting and wasn't here at, about the clarity of one of these definitions.
Yeah.
But I think even before that, there seemed to be some conversation about just the general clarity of these three and how they interact.
Right.
If you feel comfortable with it, then that's fine, but it just, I never took down a specific note. It was just, it seemed like there was some conversation around the clarity or maybe even the usefulness of having these three different definitions.
Right.
Um, uh, yeah, that was...
Thank you for doing this.
Yeah.
Because that did, yeah, lively conversations.
Yes. And it continues.
So the only one for me that, the only one for me that potentially needs clarification is Article Two, E2B3, uh, the bottom one, which continues onto the back page. So in 2018, we added the word, we added, my remembrance of this is, and the warrant article on it, was that we, we added in "and septic shall be placed." In 2020, we reduced the setback for the, the septic, but we didn't change the verbiage here. We only changed it on the setback chart. So...
Right.
So that's the only thing I think that's creating confusion as to the thirty thousand square foot area. We had had a prior, uh, response from council at one point, which I thought I'd emailed asking for, uh, if they could dig it up, but I, I couldn't find that I did. Where they had confirmed that the, the controlling setback is the fifty-foot all around. It's for where the, a home is suitable for placement. Just the fact that we reduced the restriction on septic, septics, that didn't change what is considered, um, the buildable area for, for the house. We just reduced septic, so the, the septic got left in that, that section and probably should not have been.
So... You don't have to put the septic on the fifty feet?
No, because we reduced it to twenty, fifty feet from the front, but twenty from the sides and rear.
So not talking about particular cases?
No.
I'm not talking about particular cases, but if you have a thirty thousand building envelope for the house goes, and the septic is outside of that thirty thousand, it's still okay? The leach field, the ditch field, it's still okay?
The four K area, yeah, as long as it's within, no, no, less than twenty feet from sides and rear.
The property lines.
Right, but it doesn't change that the thirty thousand is still the contiguous area based on fifty-foot setbacks for the house.
No, again, that's still not discussed, I mean, we're just talking about the house.
Mm-hmm.
You know where the house is, thirty thousand building envelope.
The house is, controls the thirty thousand square foot building envelope, the most restrictive of the...
Not the leach field.
Correct. Not, not the leach field, not the accessory structures, which have always been twenty feet. It's, the, the only thing that we not aired on, but didn't add clarification to is when, when that was pulled back out and reduced back down to twenty, we didn't change that verbiage in there to say, uh, so, so even if you read it now, it's a lot envelope in which a house is, it still says in which a house shall be placed. Just the fact that says "and septic system" doesn't negate the fact that says a house shall be placed, so...
That's not the issue, the issue is that their four K area was outside of the fifty-foot setback. Or an example of a, of a house, the four K area being outside of the five, fifty-foot, but inside the twenty.
The, so my understanding of the way we changed the, the ordinance in that was the 2020 warrant article, was that we allowed the septics to move outside that fifty-foot to twenty.
But the house has to stay within the fifty.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we, so we changed the chart, so setbacks, the chart on number three, A, that was one of the areas where it's added, between side and rear property lines and accessory buildings and septic systems was added twenty feet. For, uh, standard lots, all of the lots. So, so I don't know if there's any more discussion from the board on, on, on that, if, if anybody wants, you know, again, we have, we have conditions for pre-existing non-conforming lots. For every other lot that's out there, including new lots, the fifty-foot has been, was what we've been going by for, um, for zoning. We can change that, we can keep it, we can increase it, we can decrease it, and then put it to the voters, but, um, I think the thought was, since these are two-acre lots, you know, having that kind of setback, fifty feet, and then another fifty feet for the neighbor, is a hundred feet, that's, that's not that much distance between two houses on two-acre lots. Or it is, but it's not, you know.
Couple of comments, um, Blair, you didn't catch on page four, three A, there's a whole chart there on the, um, on the septic. One of the things that was debated on heavily was here's one definition that says no buildings, and then here it says here's accessory buildings, and then the other one, they had three different descriptions, and, um, what this has done, for example, on the Hall, Hall Road, Hall Street, whatever it is, um, with them, property, is they had twenty-six thousand square feet on a existing lot they could build on today exactly as it sits, but because they didn't have that extra four thousand.
Yeah, I appreciate you being here tonight. So, so that's a... That's a separate, um...
Can I ask which article you're referring to? You said page number, whatever, like, which article?
Article two, C, C, uh, C two, I think.
Our zoning ordinance.
Article two, C, which is residential, oh, and then two, and then that part of it, and then, or number three, I'm sorry, setbacks. So that's a separate kind of item, so the other area that setbacks come into an issue is our, what I'm going to continue to refer to as the savings clause. We, we have, under the chart, applicable only to pre-existing non-conforming lots of less than two acres as of the date of passage.
Mm-hmm.
So that pre-existing non-conforming, and then we also have non-conformers, which is section U. It's a specific non-conformer section. That's where we start running into problems with, well, if we do a lot line adjustment, the lot's pre-existing and it's non-conforming. Right now, it's technically buildable within the zoning and has less restriction. But as soon as you change that lot of record date, so a develop, a subdivision or a lot line adjustment,
It becomes a new lot.
You've, you've created a new lot of record date, and therefore you've removed those protections and you, you've increased the non-conformity, and I don't know how we, I have not figured out a way to... You've, you've created a new lot of record date and therefore you've removed those protections and you, you've increased the non-conformity, and I don't know how we, I have not figured out a way to, to, to change the language in there, where you still provide the protections, unless you say this, you know, lot line adjustments do not, you know, these.
Even if you provided more capability to that lot.
Yeah, and in general, in the past, we looked at it, if it's becoming more conforming, it's been allowed, if it's becoming less conforming or not changing, it's.
How the rest of the board feels about that, but you know, here's this guy that owns a five acre lot and two acres, and he wants to sell off this lot and keep a little bit more land with his house, and, and he can't do it. It's because of this thirty thousand arbitrary number picked out of air that doesn't really mean anything, because obviously they could fit a house there, they could fit a septic there, they had the well, they had all the normal house stuff on the plan, yet you, you, you can't do this. And it just, it was kind of frustrating to see that, and I feel bad about that, actually. So my quick dumb thoughts on that, to maybe fix that a little bit, I'm going to offer fixing things, because we're seeing this problem come up again over on the Build Pond project, I don't know if we can talk about a project.
No, we can't, definitely not.
Right, on another miscellaneous project out there that, you, we're looking at these plans that have all these overlapping lines, and now we have to throw this thirty thousand square foot lines on there, and I don't even know, let's get, take it off, it doesn't apply, it doesn't, you know, there's already setbacks for the house, there's already setbacks from the wetlands, there's, why do we need to put a square in this lot? Can we make this twenty thousand, is that?
You can make it any number you want, but, so what's in here currently is what the town has, has requested and has voted for and approved. So everything within the zoning ordinance, you know, no matter, this can be changed and, but it's also been the will of the town.
I'm suggesting it changed because we see, and four, the, the lots on that unnamed road up there that we saw recently, have nine acre lots, but they can't fit this shape in there, and they had to read just, oh, it's a bottleneck, it's too close, and it's.
You can't do a bottleneck.
I mean, you can fit a house in there, you can put a driveway, you can put a septic, you can put a well, but you can't have this bottleneck shape thirty thousand square foot fitting on this nine acre lot. Why even have two acre zoning if you need nine acres to build on it? So two things we could do, A, lower that down to like twenty thousand, or B, one of the things I saw on the other unnamed road, was that we're taking out the setback area around wetlands to say, you have to fit the square in this seventy five foot setback that you can't build on anyway, and we're taking that up, so we're making, constraining this thirty thousand square feet, I mean, that's somebody's yard.
So, but you can make, you can make this argument all night long, so you could have a hundred acre parcel that's a hundred percent wetlands, that doesn't mean you have the right to build on it. So just because you own land, doesn't mean it's buildable land. So you can make the argument, well, you can go, technology lets you, I can go fill and dredge that entire parcel, doesn't mean the town wants to see that done, so it's a balance of the master plan, what the town wants to see, and what's here now, and a balance of, you know, allowing development, allowing people that own land now to continue to, to, to develop, but also have that balance of not completely changing the character of the town at the will of the voters. So, you know, the restrictions, a part of it's because we don't have town water, town sewer, so it's trying to make sure that we ensure for the, the future that all these sites are, are going to be sufficient for wells and, you know, septic systems and such, and that we don't deplete our aquifers too, so there's, there's a lot that goes into it.
So they plotted the well, the septic, the driveway, the house, the four K area, all on an existing lot, and it all fits perfectly, they can build on that tomorrow, exactly as it is.
And the applicant's welcome to go get a variance, so if they don't like the way the zoning is written now, any applicant can ask for a variance. But, but again, you know, I don't, I mean, the board can decide tonight if we want to like really overhaul our definition of a lot envelope and what the requirements are, but additional protections have been put in for highly sensitive areas, being wetlands, stream overlays, aquifer districts. Those have been added over the last few years, specifically at the call from, from, from voters, so I don't want to then negate those protections that have been added by then, you know, saying, well, now they could do it because we're just going to strip this down and say ten thousand square feet is fine, and as long as they've got fifty feet around it.
Where did the fifty feet come from, when we're talking about the hourglass shape, and that the center has to be more than fifty feet? Why fifty feet, why isn't it even there?
You got a better number?
No, yeah, give me a hundred feet, I don't know, I, I don't understand why the hourglass is banned.
Well, it just.
I can build here and I can build here, right?
The hourglass allows the capability for those contiguous lands that are fit for building or part of the lot envelope to exist, and so I can't give you a reason why fifty, but it allows the capability for passage of vehicles and all that kind of stuff. But the reality is, the number is pretty much insignificant.
It's arbitrary.
Arbitrary.
Okay. I didn't want to extract a royalty. Seventy five, yeah.
But it's, it's trying to make sure that uplands exist, and with the setbacks and all that kind of stuff. You know, we have a requirement that lots should be rectangular in nature, well, they never are, okay, and so we see plans that end up being very, very strange looking when they could be really good, but in most cases, that's when it's wetland. And they're, they're going in, they're, they're taking as much of that land as possible that is, we consider fit for building and becomes part of the lot envelope. They make those things first, and then they start drawing the lot lines.
Fifty feet sounds like a lot, I mean, I think this room is about, is about fifty feet.
No, more like thirty.
Just count the, I don't know, okay, count the tiles, but it's a.
Yeah.
Forty.
It's not much.
Thirty five. It's a small room, but hey, it's going to the rec people, so.
So. I mean, one of the, you know, one of the reasons from a planning perspective about finding adequate amounts of upland for a buildable area is because, you know, we don't have any stormwater management infrastructure in this community, and there's limited expected on a, on a residential lot. You start letting people build on smaller and smaller bits of upland, you're going to have flooding issues down the road, and, you know, environmental regulations came into play and largely kept a lot of things from being filled in, or channelized or drained. And, you know, I believe that, you know, somebody that lives and breathes and, and drowns sometimes in regulations, you know, I know what it's, I know where the frustrations come from. So I think finding that balance is going to be hard, is it fifty feet, is it seventy five feet, you know, who knows, but I think having some area past the foundation that is upland and protected at least slightly from any type of storm surge and water coming up, you know, is a good idea. It kind of dovetails with what we were talking about earlier with roadways and other construction or disturbances of steep slopes. You know, again, the, the management of stormwater in New Hampshire is very limited. Stormwater control structures only have to build to the size of the fifty year storm, not the hundred year storm, and we're regularly surpassing the hundred year storm. So without those things in place, you, you, you come into a real problem, and, you know, the federal flood insurance program is subsidized by the federal government, so we all pay for that. So that's, you know, I'm not trying to get too big here, but I, you know, just sort of thinking about NIBO and connecting to the SHIBO, and I think that's, from a planning perspective, this is why these types of things are encouraged, having buildable area, minimal buildable area.
I think this only gets pushed back on, on, again, lots that have very marginal areas and they're trying to squeeze in as much as possible. So we've only had it come up a couple of times where there's been pushback on that, on that area.
It's five hundred and sixty eight houses around Potawatomi Lake that you're talking about?
No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about, I'm talking about, no, I'm talking about new subdivisions, you know, in, in the past number of years, I think there's only been a handful that have pushed back on the, on any kind of setbacks and fewer still that have gone for any kind of variance.
Town, if I just can mention, and I have town bow here, because A, I used to live there, and B, I was interactive there a little bit and know some things, not much. The applicant shall show a contiguous building envelope on the plan that depicts a plot of buildable land sufficiently large for the proposed building, well, septic and related improvements. It doesn't say twenty thousand, thirty thousand, fifty thousand, fifty feet wide, hourglass shape, it says it's big enough to sustain a house and its accommodations. Hall, hall road being a perfect example of, you can't put this thirty thousand square foot.
We really can't talk about any pending case, no, but I mean, we really can't legally, it'll get the town into really hot water, so we got to make sure we are talking about hypotheticals or, or whatever, we can't mention any specific cases unless they have.
We're seeing these cases and they're popping in, and it's like, well, go back and redesign, and they can't fit this arbitrary thirty thousand.
Everything is arbitrary, though, our entire zoning ordinance, if you want to look at it that way, is arbitrary. So we can get rid of the whole zoning ordinance, but it's all arbitrary, so the town has picked these numbers, and with Bo, I would argue that they, they, that's got to refer back to somewhere else in their ordinance, it doesn't just mean you can, you can take a point one acre lot and you show a well and house and whatever, there's somewhere in that ordinance that's going to talk about the minimum size, Deerfield went to three acres for a minimum. So we're seeing towns do all kinds of different things, I think the only time we've had this again in the last twelve years, it's been twice, I think that an applicant has tried to push back on the contiguous area. And again, it's major subdivisions, it's developers, it's not, it's not, you know, it's generally not, a homeowner is trying to make the lot for their, their child. But that doesn't matter either, it, it's, it matters, but it doesn't matter. And so what I think we need to clear, you know, if we change anything in this, it's clearing the language up of getting that septic out of that one section, and then how do we address that other situation that occurred where they were taking a lot that was pre-existing, yes, they were making it smaller, but they weren't changing the buildable area one bit, but because of the, the language that was there to protect that lot, did it mean the problem of stopping it?
I understand that, 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 that second scenario there, because of the lot of record changing up, we, we, we understand that, but I guess there's a question too about are we creating a new lot or, or not, and there's, there's probably interpretations there, but I just see this, this thirty thousand creeping up on this, this subdivision we just saw, unnamed subdivision, creeping in there, and I was honestly in both of the, the couple unnamed cases, trying to figure out where this was, and then trying to read, I've read this like seventeen times, and it conflicted with its own self, and.
You're going to find that all throughout the zoning ordinance.
You're going to find that.
Conflicts exist, sixty pages, you know, you make one that has downstream effects.
And you're going to find that applicants will get very creative and argue, argue for their, for their, the person that's paying them, so I'm not saying they're doing it unethically, it's ethical, what they're doing is they're advocating for their person, we're here to balance that out with what the town has placed, and then ultimately, some of it comes back down to interpretation, but applicants are always, are often going to, you know, say this, 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 and yeah, that, that, we're interpreting it this way, we saw it with another case where they, they were saying, we interpret this this way, it's, and we all said, no, that's, that's, that's great, but that's not how it's been, been done.
Mr. Chairman, it is a quarter to your stop of ten, can we look at setting another work date?
Yes.
And finish up, because we don't really have time to discuss anything else.
No.
Agreed, I want, so the, the quick, I, I know the two items that we're going to definitely have a workshop on, so far, we did say we talked a little bit more in depth about steep slopes. We talked a little bit more about detached ADUs and what language we might need to amend or add and clarify.
Setbacks.
Setbacks, at least to get the septic out of the definition, is my understanding, but am I wrong there?
At setbacks, we'd like to discuss the decreasing of them.
For the, for the septic, for the pre-existing non-conforming?
Correct.
The ten feet for septics.
Should we take like a quick vote and kind of make a quick motion on, let's, let's make that septic ten feet?
I'd like to talk about it more for all the property lines.
And then.
Just trying to get somewhere.
It's not, it's not just septic, it's not just septic for the, for the zoning and.
Does the septic thing mean the four K area here, rather than a septic system itself, or the, just the four K area?
Septic system, so it's the, which would be the four K area.
We're just talking plats here, so.
Yes.
It's the four K area.
Yeah, because that's going to be where the septic system goes, so now, now that can go outside that, yeah, yes.
The four K area, you have to put everything inside that, and your test pits have to be inside that.
Right.
Yeah, that's correct, but, but the way this is worded is septic system, okay, every, I, I don't mean to continue on, I'm just trying to clarify this when I think about this later. The four K area is fictitious, just same, the same as the house and the well and everything else, it, it will become something else later on, so all we're talking about here is the four K area being shown within the envelope, the lot envelope, right? That's not the septic system, that is the four K area.
But the, but we're saying, yes.
If you say four K area, it's not the septic system.
But the septic is there too, is because for existing lots, zoning does affect existing lots as well, so not just subdivisions, so it's, on subdivisions, we have a four K area that's platted out, and that's exact, that's where the, it's expected that the septic system's going to go, but existing lots, you know, all right.
So on a.
No.
No?
No.
Well, hold on, I just want to whip through the last couple of things. These other things are quickly, are housekeeping, we've got aquifer protection district map to, to adopt, and again, it's, it's not a new map, it's an existing map, but the one that we have and the one that's online is very large file size, it takes a very, forever to load, I think we just need a public hearing for that. So I want to get that done, adopt the FEMA map for 2021, we currently have the two thousand and five, usually I think we have a savings clause in our zoning in, in areas where this is referenced thing and as amended, but maybe not, so we'll need to get that done as well, and I believe that is just a public hearing, unless it affects zoning. Add main structures to setbacks definitions, we talked about that, so that would be an item we've already discussed tonight, review setback minimum distance, I think we talked about that tonight, miscellaneous, we're just more housekeeping items, present, present update in, not having roadmap, Blair nailed that one. We do need to get to, I know we wanted to have more discussion on elderly and high density housing, which we can have at the next workshop, master plan update is just showing that we, I'm keeping it on agendas to show that we do need to get to it and make a plan for that going forward.
We did have a discussion with the last meeting you were here, I had reached out to Ellen about this town pursuing a housing opportunity planning grant. SRPC is a contractor that could be hired, you have other options, but we do offer the service, we've done it with other communities, and we will write the grant application for free, with the, you know, understanding that we will be hired if the grant is, is approved, if it's not approved, there is no cost to the town. I sent a follow-up email to Ellen, explained this, I said, would you like us to pursue it, she said that would not be a problem, she would be okay with it, if this board is okay with it, you know, we will pursue it, SRPC will pursue it.
I want to add to that, if we don't apply for a two point nine million dollar grant, or whatever share we could get, then we will definitely not get, period, end of story. This gentleman is offering to do this for free as part of their service, why wouldn't we say, let's do this, this plan, master plan, eleven year, thirteen years old, it is so outdated, every single goal in here has not been met, not one, there's vision, goal for housing, not one, we need to fix this, this is our roadmap, we're driving down the road without a roadmap, so can we please say, yes, let's get this application in, we may or may not get it, but we know we will absolutely, the only shot you miss, Wayne Griskey, is the one you don't take.
Yeah, I'm, you know, Blair, again, I'm fine with, if it's been discussed and, and town administrators already had a chance to chime in, if that's an option for us, then that'll give us some funds next year potentially to, as we look to get into the master plan update, great, you know, that, again.
This would be for the housing chapter only.
I understand.
We might be able to squeeze in Elena's chapter, but we'll see.
As long as there's nothing in there that controls the town, and again, we could decline the grant later on, but nothing that controls. the grant later on, but nothing that controls the, the, binds the town into saying, well, now you have to do this, this, and this, or include these sections.
Yeah, they don't have anything in the application language that says the town must adopt two ADUs and 20,000 square foot minimum lot size. What it does say, I think at least one person, perhaps more, has to go to a training session about doing, how to do good public outreach. I will have to go to it myself, but the town may have to say something.
I will actually do that. So, I've already gone through the training for the application, and I've been following this thing, and...
I think just to make it official, even though, I think just make it, have an motion by the board just to direct you to go forward with that, if that helps add clarity.
So moved.
So, I have a motion by Mrs. Bascom, any second?
I'll second.
A second by Mr. Severance to, to direct SRPC to pursue the grant opportunity for the housing chapter of the master plan, through whichever one that is. Any further discussion? All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye for John.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Board of selection.
Motion carries, we'll just call it 6-0.
And we actually already said yes, so...
Okay.
Yeah, I'm gonna be sending like a summary letter request for the board to start from the vote. Did you already take the vote?
We met last week.
Okay.
He didn't tap you in, though.
All right. You may have taken, you may have taken an official vote to...
Yeah, he did.
So...
We're good, I know what to do.
So we're gonna skip, we're gonna skip the public comment, we're gonna skip...
I love that, come on, where's my son?
We're gonna skip minutes for tonight, I think, setting another workshop meeting, since it seems like our agendas are gonna be pretty full for September, so either separate, creating an, another date in like October that we hold the second meeting as a workshop, or we set a separate meeting, make, for three meetings in a month for a workshop, I'll let the board...
Or like an, an hour or two before...
Or an hour or two before.
...any meeting.
Make for a long night, but yes.
Save some people extra driving time.
I'd rather have a separate workshop than put in another couple hours on the...
Okay, well, and you and I can discuss offline on that part.
Chief?
Yes.
Are you leaving?
Uh, have you seen that talk to him?
All right, good, I'm gonna wanna get a minute with you if I can.
Oh, sure, thank you.
Thank, thank you for being here tonight, both of you.
Speedy ticket.
Thank you, Kevin.
Yeah, yeah, go, go.
All right, so next meeting, September 11th, and then September 25th. I am away, the 23rd, 24th, 25th, I'm away for that second meeting, most likely, I might make it in, but I have a work trip. So, we could schedule, again, I don't, do we already have things continued to both those dates, I think we have, we have items on the 11th already? And stuff on the 25th?
Yes.
Yeah.
And a new kind of conceptual.
Yeah.
I mean, we could try to squeeze in one at a time on our regular agenda?
I just don't see it happening, but...
Really? All right.
Our meetings go pretty late, as it is.
If there's nothing else on it.
We can put him, we could put something on the agenda for any of those meetings too, to, to Mr. Haney's point, and if it ends up being a late night, we oftentimes get to continuance requests at the last minute.
Right.
We'll have time to work on it that night.
Yeah.
We can all schedule a workshop, and then cancel the workshop.
That sounds fine.
So...
I just know we need to start working on it, it's not gonna get done.
We do.
Like, tonight, we got through how much of what we planned, it's just, we need to set a separate time, it seems, to actually, actually get through this stuff.
So...
And I think it's good that we would do that, this seems like a lot of stuff that's been sitting there idly for a while, it really needs to be addressed, so...
Year to year, we're just, it's, the planning board is so busy.
We still have the subregs to tackle.
Blair, what input do you need to effectuate your application for?
Nothing.
Nothing?
Well, having the vote tonight was more than I could have asked for, so...
Okay.
And you need somebody...
So what's gonna happen is, I'm gonna submit, I'm gonna submit, what Ellen told me, what I need to do, what Ellen and I worked out, is that I need to submit some kind of summary request to the board of selectmen, they would vote to instruct the town administrator to sign the application to be submitted. So that would be the vote that would be taken, just to, 'cause someone has to assign the application on the town's behalf, it can't be us, we're just writing it. So you would make the vote, I guess you could vote...
Go for it.
Yeah, and then she would be the signatory on the application.
And in the application calls for like, you know, gradings and points based upon the town wanting to do certain things, et cetera, I mean, do we need to outlay any like ideas, or like, we're gonna try to put up some affordable housing, or some crazy thing like that?
No, I don't think it needs to get into that level of specificity, because they know that you, until you go through the public process, you don't know what's gonna come out of it. So you can't, and you can't lay out specific outcomes because public process.
And you've successfully done this, SRPC, you've successfully done this, there's some other municipalities.
Yeah, I just finished several, I mean, we all did. The last month and a half has been ridiculous, because they all do this past month.
Who typically does it? List in New Hampshire, or...
Sorry?
List in New Hampshire, are they the ones that typically do the, the studies, the community studies?
No, no, the regional planning agencies are, are the usual hire by the communities, but there are private sector companies and individuals that will do this for you. And they went out, the state went out and did a pre-approval process, so I think you can actually just select them from the list, which is normally what you can do for us, we're exempt from, from public bidding process as a quasi-public agency. But for this particular grant process, I think they actually went out and did it for private. So you, I tried to make that very clear last time, you don't have to hire us, but I did wanna bring it to your attention, you know, because that is part of my role.
And it makes sense with our relationship with us, RPC, and your familiarity with us, but, you've got four minutes, I mean it, all right, stop, nope, nope. So September 18th, I'm proposing that the September 11th and September 25th agenda is that we will put on zoning ordinance updates discussion as one of the items in the subdivision site plan regulation updates, just to carry it over, and then the goal is to get to those, but if that meeting agenda is really long, obviously we won't, we'll table it. I say we take, we pencil in a workshop for September 18th or October 2nd. The only reason I say October 2nd is that, that would give us the 11th and 25th of September to potentially work on some of these during regular meetings, and if we don't get to them, then we get into October.
So if we do have a change, we have to put it out to public hearing at some point, and then it has to go onto the town board?
Yeah, we, we'll start running into, so we're too early for the warrant article sessions, public hearings, but it'll get us ready to be able to prepare those, yeah, yeah. Those will be January, I think.
There's a maximum amount of time out from town meeting that you can do your public hearings.
So, so do we wanna try to work on some wording for some of these proposed areas that after kinda some discussion, or how do we fix to say, hey, we wanna work on the steep slopes and...
Yeah, so we, so we do have some draft language now, probably reach back out to Blair and SRPC and see, you know, there is draft language, but, you know, we've probably come up with a couple of options for the, this town to decide as to what we wanna do if anything, so we would discuss, you know, what's currently, and then what we may, may add in, same thing with ADUs, in what areas maybe need to be updated, if we do add detached, and any of the other items we talked about. So yeah, we, we, the goal would be to have some specific items ahead of time to everybody, so then those meetings could be productive to discuss, to discuss those.
I, I would prefer we look at October 2nd only because I have zoning...
Yep.
And then SRPC through the week of...
There's five Wednesdays in October, so...
And I think giving us, ourselves two meetings to potentially fit in another couple makes sense.
Yes.
I also agree that October 2nd would be preferable.
So October 2nd, we will, we're penciling in a workshop for the planning board to discuss specific zoning and subdivision site plan regulation updates, but we will put them on the September 11th and September 25th agendas as well, as time permits, we can actually write as time permits on the agenda too, so people aren't surprised if we don't get to them.
And I move that we table the approval of minutes, and that we adjourn.
Just real quick, any staff, member, any updates that are like, highly specific? Usually it's luck board.
I got one question.
Yes.
Have you guys appointed a CIP rep yet?
We have not appointed a CIP rep, we've, yes, we have, a few requests out.
The next meeting for CIP is the beginning of next month, so it would be best if there was a planning board rep there.
Not a...
CIP is having budget capital improvement.
And what is the CIP committee, what do they do?
It is a subset of the master plan.
That still doesn't help me hold.
So, basically, it's long, right, capital improvement, it's like forecasting, you guys did talk about it some tonight. So it's like putting all those things in place to say, okay, how much are we gonna spend here and there, and it's just a, it's a piece of the master plan.
It's a budgeting, actually.
It is, yeah, budgeting plan, so technically, CIP used to be a role of the planning board.
I would agree to go to the meeting and see what happens there without being appointed. No, I just, just be funny, show up and watch and observe and try to follow and see if that fits.
Appreciate that.
I don't know the exact date, but it is the beginning of next month.
I'll, I'll do that if you want me to.
Yeah, that'd be great, Skip.
You wanna be the CIP rep? Anybody wanna make a nomination to nominate?
I move that Skip Severance be the CIP rep for the planning board.
I second that.
Motion by Mrs. Bascom, second by Mr. Stevens to nominate Skip Severance as our CIP representative, thank you for doing that, Skip. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
That was enthusiastic, not me.
All right.